Good evening, it's not even evening, good afternoon, everybody, and thank you for being here for the goal-setting workshop for the city of Agoura Hills. It's our special meeting of Wednesday, March 13, 2024. I'd ask that you all please silence your cellphones and other electronic devices during this meeting. For in-person attendance, council chambers doors will open to the public at 3:30 to watch the live, am I, I've got like seven scripts here, so give me a second. That's right, okay. So, let's see. Oh, that was the agenda. Okay, got it. Welcome to the Agoura Hills City Council Goal-Setting Workshop. Please silence all cellphones, as I previously asked. Public comments are limited to items on the workshop agenda. If you wish to speak or submit a written comment, please complete a comment card and hand it to the city clerk. I'm going to call this meeting to order and defer to a member of this, how about Mr. Councilmember Ansted? Why don't you lead us in the flag salute?
(inaudible)
Thank you. And now we'll defer to the city clerk for a roll-call vote.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Councilmember Ansted?
Here.
Councilmember Lopez?
Here.
Councilmember Wolf?
Present.
Mayor Protem Sylvester?
Here.
Mayor Buckley-Weber?
Here.
Mayor Buckley-Weber, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Now I need to get an approval of tonight's, of today's agenda. Will the maker of the motion and the second to approve this agenda state your name, please?
Mayor Protem Sylvester moves to approve the agenda.
I'll second. Deborah Klein-Lopez.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please take a roll-call?
Councilmember Ansted?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Buckley-Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Buckley-Weber, you have approval, five to zero.
Thank you. We're now moving on to public comments. This section is reserved for public comments relating to the goal-setting workshop. If you have something to distribute to the city council, please hand it to our city clerk. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Persons addressing the city council shall not engage in disorderly conduct that disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. I will now defer to the city clerk.
Thank you. We did receive one written public comment in advance of the meeting that was distributed to the council and will be part of the record from Merrill S. Platzer, Agoura Hills. We do have speakers this me, this evening. Our first is Dr. Merrill S. Platzer, followed by Carolyn Trassino.
Come on up, Ms. Platzer. Dr. Platzer.
Okay. Good afternoon. I'm going to give a little history of Dark Skies, and actually, my ex-husband and I were the original authors of it in Old Agoura. I'm an old-time resident of Old Agoura since October in 1981. The city was founded on the premise that we can do better than Los Angeles, establish better guidelines to keep it open space and sensible development, and not just be an extension of the San Fernando Valley. There was a fight in the early years by Mayor Fran Pavley to remove all slightly billboards. We did it, and it only improved the city of Agoura Hills. My ex-husband and I had an observatory in the backyard with a large working telescope. He took photographs of the horseshoe nebula and rings of Saturn. The skies were dark enough at that time to see the Milky Way. We actually had an art presentation at City Hall of his photographs. We met with Jess Thomas at that time to keep streetlights out of Old Agoura and protect the dark skies. In protecting the dark skies, it's like protecting open space, just like cleaning up waterways and purchasing open space for parklands and trails. It is not a novel idea. North of San Diego County and Tucson, Arizona are key dark-skies localities. It does not mean no lights. Bright lights and glares are light pollution. Critics of dark skies say crime will increase. This is not necessarily true. Tucson, Arizona adopted an outdoor lighting ordinance in 1972 in an effort to provide standards so that night lighting did not interfere with nearby observatories and also protect the wildlife area. Tucson has a population over half a million people, and it, and is considered a safe city. Minimizing wasted energy while not compromising the safety and security of well-being of persons engaged in outdoor nighttime activity. What are the common light trespass solutions? Pointing the light downward, putting the light on a motion sensor or a curfew, replacing it with a light fixture that is fully shielded, low wattage, and reducing the height of the fixture. What is an example of light trespass? A neighbor that installs a new light fixture on their property unshielded and casts a bright light that spills onto your property and inside your homes. In watching one of the city council meetings, issues were raised. How do we enforce excessive lights, especially at night? Also, there, there were no complaints. This is not true. I had to deal with my neighbor across the street for over months on having bright lights on three stories into, that were shining to my son's bedroom. My other neighbors told me it looked like an airport runway. The city finally handled it. The neighbor was mad at me and actually cussed my sons out. I had the alternative of calling the sheriffs, but this is not a good use of sheriff activity. Our city is proud of the wildlife corridor and protecting the animals. Dark skies around the open spaces are a good start, where we can do better.
Dr. Platza, if I can, if you can just wrap it up in the next, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Dark skies around open spaces are a good start, where we can do better by protecting our dark skies for, not only us, but our grandchildren. Hopefully we can codify a better lighting ordinance also. In Tucson, it actually saved money amongst the residents in the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carolyn Trassino, followed by Serena Nuzy.
I know you already know this, but the, the light system will come on. You'll start with the green, and then it goes to yellow, then to red. So, and just adjust the microphone so that you feel comfortable so everybody can hear you, because people are watching it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, city council, and city staff. Today, we follow up with you after the 2/28/24 meeting to ask you to please move the repairs and pathway creation on Chesbrough up to this budget cycle and include the small section of Fairview in this year's budget cycle. You've reviewed our presentation and heard us speak about the dangers posed by speeding cars and how unsafe it is for community residents and non-residents who frequent our community. There are also dangers posed by the deep ruts on existing pathways that are damaged by erosion. It is difficult for parents with strollers, equestrians, and runners to use the existing paths. Our road condition also compromises our parking. The result is a very unsafe environment, because everyone has to use the streets. Resolution 08-1509 and the city trails and master plan noted that 75% of study participants supported a multi-use trail network for bicycles, horses, and pedestrians. Attachment B, the Trails and Pathways Master Plan, is the framework for developing trails in Agoura Hills. The trails are desperately needed in Old Agoura, because they serve as our sidewalks. A noted benefit of the plan is to provide places for cyclists, hikers, walkers, runners, horseback riders, and physically challenged individuals to exercise, enjoy the outdoors, and experience the many benefits of our city. We need the repairs now. Please help us this budget year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trassino.
Our next speaker is Serena Nuzy, followed by Marilyn Spiegel.
Hello, everyone. I don't have much more to add to Carolyn's great delivery of the conditions of the roads in Old Agoura, particularly Chesbrough, and the trails on Fairview. Just know that collodney is also on our radar, and there was a report filed following up with Nate's, my request to Nate, and the conditions and how they're surveyed, and that survey in August of '23 actually made it sound like Chesbrough was in pretty good shape. So, I encourage you to take another look at that and hopefully move this forward. I also support dark skies ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marilyn Spiegel, followed by Joy Funkhauser.
Marilyn, would you like to come up to the, to the speakers? And thank you for coming today.
Okay, yeah, I was told that an acknowledgement for the role that Temple Beth Haverim played in the original building for what is now the community center was going to be on the agenda for tonight. I just want to say that over 150 people, including about 30 children, donated money towards the building of that facility. One person up to one and a half million dollars. And it's wonderful that it is now a community center serving Agoura Hills. But if Temple Beth Haverim had not been built in the beginning, the center would not be here. And I think that a plaque, not acknowledging all the individual donors, but some type of a plaque in recognition of what the original site was intended to be, and that it enabled the community center to be finished and serve the community should be taken care of at this point. It's long overdue.
Thank you very much for coming today.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joy Funkhauser.
Hello, Ms. Funkhauser.
Hello. It's okay to speak?
Yes, but I can barely hear you, so step a little closer.
All right.
And then, or if you can adjust the mic any way that makes it-
As long as you can hear me. Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay.
Everybody else, okay. And then the green light's on, so you can start.
Great. I'm Joy Funkhauser, and I live in the Hillrise subdivision, and I want to thank Nathan and Ramel for meeting with me, and at least the conversations we've had, and to our local law enforcement, who have been very supportive. I'm here, I'm on the HOSA board, but I'm not here in that capacity. I'm here as the Neighborhood Watch Coordinator for Hillrise regarding flock cameras. I understand that there are four cameras presently in Hillrise at the exits to the city. We're requesting three additional at the entrances of Hillrise at Buffwood and T.O. Boulevard, Gray Rock and T.O. Boulevard, and Hillrise in Canaan. We're requesting this in lieu of Hillrise geographic vulnerability with easy access and exits to criminals, and in lieu of the homeowner that was shot at, I believe it was August last summer. And we know that the flock cameras played a significant role in apprehending those suspects. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming today.
Thank you, Mayor Buckley-Weber. We have no further speaker cards.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now we're going to move on to a discussion of city council short and long-term goals, and I will defer to our city manager, Nathan Hamburger, for the staff presentation.
Thank you. As they put the PowerPoint up, I just want to welcome everybody, honor mayor and council members. This is our first goal workshop of two, and then that will lead us into our June budget workshop. And so, as a reminder, this is year two of our two-year budget cycle. So, the good news is a lot of the hard work has been done. We did that last year. What we are really looking at is were there changes over the year, or things that came up that we need to add into the budget or make adjustments to the budget? That's what we'll be discussing today. I will briefly touch on the existing council goals for this year, and just where those are, and timelines for that. And as a reminder, anything that the council would like to add to the goals list, will then, if its majority of the council is supportive of it moving forward, it will go to the appropriate subcommittee first. That's where we'll look at the timelines, budget costs, and a recommendation from the subcommittee would come back to the council the next goals workshop. With that, I do have a pretty tight timeframe today, so I will still try to stop at the end of each subject area and get feedback from the council, or answer any questions that you have. So, please feel free to let the mayor and myself know, and we'll be glad to do that. So, with that, we've touched on that. What I'm gonna do is turn it over to our Director of Finance, Diego Ibanez, for a couple of imperative slides for us on the overall budget and economy.
Thank you, city manager. Good afternoon, mayor and city council. During this evening's workshop, finance staff will be reviewing the following topics. Year two of the 2425 biannual city budget, the overall economic expectations at the macro level and the local city level. Thirdly, staff will review revenue expectations and forecasts for the new year and going forward. And the biannual budget was adopted on June 28, 2023, and some revenue expectations and forecasted assumptions have changed. And lastly, staff will review planned expenditures and capital improvements the staff is currently working on. Next slide, please. In this slide, the city's top revenue streams are sales tax, which makes up about 17% of the general fund, property tax, which makes up about 21% of the general fund, and transient occupancy tax, which accounts for 17% of the general fund. As we begin this budget season, staff will review and speak in full detail about these streams for council's review in or around May. Using in-house analysis and HDO, the city's consultant on taxes to adjust forecasts and update assumptions for the 2425 fiscal year. For now, staff is reviewing the larger economic picture, interest rates, interest rate cuts, inflation, unemployment, and analyzing how that could possibly impact the local Agoura Hills community. Property tax is holding steady for this current 2324 fiscal year, but it could impact in coming years to come, as home sales have slowed down. Transient occupancy tax is holding steady, but staff will ask council to reconsider the forecast for short-term rentals for fiscal year 2425. Interest earning is expected to increase, given interest rates and an improved investment performance. Next slide. In terms of other revenues, staff is expecting to receive this year, there's a fee of reimbursement for Category Z admin charges, which is roughly about $30,000. Staff continues to look at grant opportunities at the federal and state level for assistance in operations, programming, and possible infrastructure needs. Lastly, this week, admin and finance staff may have a matrix, the consultant who will be assisting in updating the city's fee schedule, to bring the new schedule up to date, ensure that the fees are in accordance with direct and indirect costs of the city's resources. As with any budget, there are also annual increases in expenditures. The Los Angeles Sheriff Contract will increase by 3.06% in 2425, with an increase in liability insurance. We have and will close on funding for the Ladyface Greenway project on 3/21. We do have grants that will assist in reimbursement of the project, with the exception of interest payment. There will be continued work on Schumash Park in 2425. Staff has received the UAL CalPERS invoice, and it's about $556,012 for the 2425 fiscal year. Back to the Greenway project, the full payment next year is $1,429,693.70. And lastly, as we kick off the budget season for 2425, all departments are staying with an approved, approved appropriated request at this time.
Thank you. Diego, and from there, I'll take back over, and we'll go into our first area, land use economic development. We have completed the commercial cannabis survey that was presented to the council. The goals that will be completed in this fiscal year, our sign and lighting ordinance is in draft form, and that'll be coming to the council in the next couple of months, as well as the Agoura Village Pacific Plan update that is set to go before the planning commission coming up, and then it'll be in front of the council following that. And we have some goals that will trickle into next year. We are looking at, the start is the oak tree ordinance. I just want to also identify that's a tree preservation is, is what we're looking at. The city did have to hire a new arborist and consultant, so they're picking up that work and continuing it, but it will kind of carry us slightly over into the next fiscal year. And then our historical preservation ordinance, we anticipate coming in the early part of the next fiscal year. And the one that will have, we anticipate having a agreement with a consultant is looking at the light impacts near wildlife mitigation and significant ecological areas that, that contract will have this year. And what, one thing that staff has been asked to present to the council is to look at adding one additional goal, and that is to analyze the best way to protect against lighting impacts due to new construction. So, basically, how lighting stays on property so that it can maintain safety, but doesn't intrude on other properties. So, what I will do at this point is stop, make sure that we have consensus on the council to move forward with that goal or not, and then any questions that you have in regards to land use economic development.
Do any council members have any questions about the additional goal? Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you. As a member of the Land Use Economic Development Committee, I'm happy to consider this additional goal. Look forward to bringing that back to our committee. I do have one question, if you can go back a slide. If, Mr. Hamburger, if you can maybe touch on why the historical preservation ordinance has moved into the following fiscal year, because that was on our two-year goal-setting session from, from last year as, as part of a two-year budget cycle that would end before that. And then, my second question is, while we're doing the oak tree ordinance, do we need to also be doing our hillside ordinance review? Those are my questions.
I'm gonna start with the historical preservation ordinance. So, we actually have, staff has a draft. Unfortunately, the state passed a slew of different laws that require us to process different application, planning applications that come in, in a specified timeframe. None of those we knew were coming in, and we had, so we had to switch staff from working on this goal into the actual requirements of those applications. As soon as we get through those processes, I, I don't know the exact number, I think we have about six or seven of those that are underway right now, that'll clear up the ability to finish up reviewing the historical preservation ordinance. We do have the draft. We'll need to go through legal review, and then we present that to the council. And then, in regards to the hillside ordinance, it is something that the council would like to look at. We would need to allocate something into the budget, so that could be an additional goal if the council wants to look at that. We would need to look at probably bringing on a consultant, though, and probably, I would have to defer to our city attorney later to figure out what that would look like as far as legal review as well.
Okay. Unless a council member feels otherwise, I'm happy to hold on that until the next two-year budget session. I can bring that up next year, so we can start fresh with the hillside ordinance. And then, if, with the historical preservation, if, if we can just basically put that at the top of the to-do list, just because it's, it's been a while, and I want to make sure that our, you know, beloved resources are as protected as possible.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, councilwoman. Any other comments or questions about land use economic development? Does anybody have any problem with the additional goal?
No, I don't have a problem. I just wanted a little clarification for the light impacts near the wildlife migration and significant ecological areas. Significant ecological areas would be Old Agoura, correct? Would that-
There's areas of Old Agoura that do have SEA, but I don't know that it's in the residential area. I'd have to take a look at that, unless Mr. Hamburger knows.
My understanding is when we looked at it previously, that it's not the entire area, but as Mayor Buckley-Weber mentioned, it's certain areas of-
So, it is some residential areas in Old Agoura. But, okay, thank you.
So, hearing no opposition, let's add the additional goal to consider.
All right.
And then we can move on.
Thank you. So, we'll move to the environmental responsibility. We are underway on our climate action and adaptation implementation, and we've gone through an extensive process through, to establish all the metrics. I'm really glad to report that we've, we've made a ton of progress on that. Our consultant has done a really great job, as well as our building official on that. And we'll be updating the subcommittee very soon as well. We are working towards, consider a ban of styrofoam and plastic utensils. That'll be coming to the subcommittee and then to the council. And then, the one goal that we will propose to carry over to the next fiscal year is, is not for any reason other than that we've been working with the CPA and Clean Power Alliance, and they've secured a contractor, but that work is not going to begin until the summer of 2024. But we're really excited to be partnering with them, making those improvements. The approved goal for the next year would be to implement whatever the council decides to review for the styrofoam and plastic utensils via education and an enforcement process. What I will bring forth is the new, or adjustment to that goal is to look for a funding source to help businesses implement that. So, that would be something we would add to the scope if the council does not have any objection to that. Seeing a lot of heads nodding, so unless there's any questions or anything on that, I, I'll, we'll move forward with that, okay? I got a thumbs up. I like that. Okay, we will make that amendment. I will move into now public works. The one thing that we've completed, we're very happy to report that we were looking at what started as a sound wall that wasn't going to work with the wildlife crossing. The, we've had a ton of great partnerships, and our public work staff has worked directly to include a tree wall option, or a natural option, to try to be a barrier on the 101. That is going to be included in the wildlife crossing landscape plans. And then, we have been, we're very close to completing the removal of our non-native species project for this year, and our tree planting, which will happen on Arbor Day, will be the last. And we have our Tree City USA adoption, so we're moving forward with that. Our photometric study on the race adobe interchange is complete, and now we are just looking at what kind of fixtures would be appropriate, and that will be coming back to the subcommittee very shortly, and then to the council before the end of this year. The larger goals that we're gonna carry over into the next fiscal year, the Ladyface Greenway construction, as you know, we are out to, we are out to rebid on the, will be out on Friday, the 15th, and we'll bring that back to the council, anticipated in June. The creek naturalization study, we've got an agreement coming to the council for consideration, and we'll continue moving forward with that, and that will be anticipated to be completed in the fall of 2024. And our bikeway improvements, we actually have completed everything that the council had initially outside of our special funding. So, that has been done, but we did receive a $500,000 grant from Assemblymember Irwin, and actually, that money is coming in, I believe, this week or next week. So, we're really excited about that. That's light- That's lightning speed to get grant funding, I have to admit. So we're excited to be able to move forward with that. That will, that'll probably carry over into our summer projects when we do our overlay. We'll include all of that together. For next year, we are going to continue working on our bikeway improvements. We've received a federal grant from Congresswoman Brownlee and that is about 1.6 million. So we'll start, as soon as we get the funding agreement in place, it's going to take a little bit of time, but we'll start working on that to implement the light pole or head replacement at Race Adobe Interchange once we've identified what that is for next year. And then we'll continue with our program of removing non-native species and replanting those with native species and trees. And then there's two goals that the council has asked me to present this evening to, for consideration. One is a Liberty Canyon sign, which would be a replacement of a street or directional sign that's in the public right-of-way. It has been something that has been discussed at a subcommittee level and staff level. If it's something the council would like to move forward with, I do need to bring it up that we need to talk about right-of-way issues in all of our public right-of-ways because this is, this is one of multiple instances that we're being asked to look at and I think is appropriate. If we're going to look at it, we need to look at it from a larger perspective. The second is the trailway proposal and you heard a little bit of that this afternoon from our public. What we need to do is look at design and it's not that the trail is very difficult to design, but we need to look at drainage. And so I don't know what that will all entail. So we'll need, staff will need some time, if you would like to move forward with it, to kind of figure out what that design looks like, make sure that we have all the right-of-way, and then identify either funding locally or pursue state or federal grants for that, for those improvements. So I'm going to pause here, ask for any questions, and then direction from the council on either of these proposed goals.
So let's chat. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hamburger first on the additional goals or the prior goals? Yes, Councilmember Lopez?
One question. If we were to address the issue of flock cameras, would that be under Public Works as part of street improvements or would it be under law enforcement?
It would be under law enforcement. And I can tell you though that Mr. Deva is going to bring back a report. I know he's working with staff to review. We promised the council we'd bring that back, so we'll bring that back with any proposed changes or anything in that. So we're already, that's already actually underway.
The flock?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions? Then why don't we start with you, Councilmember, whoever you are. Why don't we start with you, Councilmember Wolf? And tell us what your thoughts are on the additional goals to consider.
I'd go by many names.
I didn't want to use any of them.
Very good. Very good. So for this time, would you like me to, are we considering the additional goals or the, or looking at everything as a whole?
I don't think we need to go backwards unless you have questions or comments about the prior goals.
One question I do have is regarding the, where did it go? The tree, the tree wall, is the, tree wall options? When are we, when is that going to be coming? What's the timeline for that is probably my question.
I think Jessica can foretake and answer that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Wolf. Caltrans has already agreed to include that in the development of Phase Two of the Wildlife Corridor. So it hasn't landed on their schedule yet. I could imagine if there's a little bit of a lull in construction that that planting may happen during the winter season, but that won't need to come back before council unless you'd like to see those plans as the plans come together for the Wildlife Corridor.
And so I apologize that this has been discussed and I missed it, but so this is now part of Phase Two, so that's great news for us.
The design and construction of that wall will be borne by the Wildlife Corridor, not by the city.
Wow, that's fantastic. Great job for staff on getting that done and that type of collaboration on this project. So, and then putting a pin in that, regarding the additional goals to consider, the Liberty Canyon sign, it's been discussed a lot and I'm happy that we're moving forward with that. And the trail proposal for, in Oldagora was brought to my attention just this weekend, all these issues. And I watched the last council meeting that I wasn't present at, so I think that it's very timely and I'm very comfortable moving forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you. I'm a big proponent that we take as much back to the subcommittees as we can because, you know, if, I have no issues with the sign and the right-of-way issues being, you know, drilled down upon, but for things like the trailway proposals, you know, we need to know how much of the land is public, how much is private land, because we have private roads in Oldagora, as you know. You know, so there's a lot that I would need to rely on staff to let me know, you know, the cost. Again, maybe there are some things we could start this year that we can get into a bigger proposal next year. So I'm all for bringing it to the subcommittee to kind of, you know, shake out those details to see if it's something we can absorb this year or at least start.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Sylvester?
Thank you. Yes, I had a follow-up question about the tree wall. How long will it be in and where exactly will it be placed?
That's a great question. I can actually share those plans more widely through the city manager, but it's essentially across from the old Rio Farm development. It's, extends about 170, or no, is it? Actually, may I ask Charmaine, she's about to join me, do you have those specifics? It will go up the hillside and have several layers, but do you have that specific?
I can describe it.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello. It's approximately from where the Wildlife Corridor will stop on the north side and about where Cayenne Montecito is. So I don't know what the linear foot of that is, probably about 300.
So it's on the, it's on the north side of the freeway?
It is on the south side of the freeway, but on the north side of Agora Road.
Okay, north side of Agora.
Yes.
So is it where that housing development is?
Correct. So it starts there and it heads north or west to where Cayenne Montecito is. Yeah. If you, you know where the power lines are, it threads between the power lines and the freeway.
Right. And so that potential new townhouse development that's going up on the hill, it won't go that far, correct?
No.
That's where it will end. Yeah.
The Alabas could continue it. Thank you. And I agree with my fellow councilmembers on the rest, so I have no further questions. Thank you.
And we did get a sneak peek at the plant palette and it's quite lovely and a lot of thought has gone into the taller plants and trees being closer to the freeway and then coming down in size. So when it eventually comes to us, I think you'll be pleased. Councilmember Anstead?
Going back to the trees for a second, that actually, that proposal originated in the subcommittee. So that was, we, how this all came about was homeowners from the homeowners group there came and were upset with the noise and the traffic and all that. And so that was discussed at the Public Works and one solution that we came up with was to put the trees there. So this is great that that's happening. So I think it's fantastic. I'm all for that and I'm all for moving forward with both the Liberty Canyon sign and looking into it and also the trailway. I think it's, we've had, and Agora Hills has had the trailway master plan for a long time and we haven't really done anything with it and I think it's time that we do. And so I'm all for it.
Thank you. And I don't have much more to add other than I agree with Councilmember Lopez. Let's have it, I've been on the committee for a long time where we have several times spoken about the Liberty Canyon sign and right-of-way issues, but I say we talk about it again because why not? And maybe, maybe we'll have some new creativity. We have a new member on the Public Works and I think that, you know, we can see what we can do. And the same with the trailway proposal on Fairview Place and Chesbrough Road. You know, I've seen, seen the road, we've all seen the road. It's, you know, it's not in good condition and so we have to figure out a way that we can have our residents and our equestrians and bikers and parents and runners and everybody feel safe. And so I think it's worthwhile going to committee and seeing, coming back to the next budget committee or the one in June, whenever we're going to do that next, I guess that would be May, to get a rough idea of what the next steps would be and what this is going to cost. I would say, assuming that this would be a large, a long-term project and so, you know, but it's never too soon to take a look at getting started. So with that, does that answer your questions?
That is perfect. I appreciate all the feedback.
Great, thank you.
Okay. We are going to move to our next subcommittee on communications. These, all of our goals will be completed in this fiscal year that were set by the council. And then so we'll move to the next for the approved goals for fiscal year 2425. We'll implement proposed updates to our software and technology and equipment for public meetings. We're looking at this year adjusting the lights in the council chambers, the video we were asked to look at, and the technology and the programs that we're utilizing. One additional goal that has been brought up and is being asked to consider is a new website structure for the city. And that would also bring us into compliance, we could do at the same time, into going to the .gov. So there was legislation, as you recall, that was passed that the government agencies need to go to a .gov so we can make that transition all at once. And so with that, I'm going to stop and ask for feedback and direction on this additional goal. And I believe Councilmember Lopez also has something that she would like to discuss as well.
Go ahead, Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you. As part of the communications subcommittee, Mr. Deva and Mr. Hamburger know that emergency communications are, to me, the most important piece of all this. And while that's not a specific goal, it's always our goal. And so, you know, I just want to say that I don't think it's any surprise that our response in the recent storms over the last few months, I think, has fallen a little short. I think we could have done more outreach to people. I think we could have done a lot more online through our emails and social media. And so I just want to ask and hopefully have everyone's support that we consider emergency communications in all of these things. So it's not, it's not a new goal, it's not an added cost, but while we are reviewing software, technology, and alternatives for public meetings, we, I want to think about emergency situations. While we're upgrading our website, while we're utilizing paid social media ads, I want to always be thinking about our emergency communications with our residents because to me that's number one. So just needed to put that out there, that this is a particular issue that I'm seeing that I think we can incorporate into these goals.
Thank you. Councilmember Anstead?
I'm fine including that additional goal that was just mentioned and also with the new website structure. I think it's always good to try to stay with the times and upgrade our website, so that's good.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Sylvester?
I agree with everything Councilmember Lopez said. And also I think we must also make sure that our residents are not only signed up to all our electronic communications, but the county ones as well. Because I got a lot of flash flood warnings and things like that during the storms and that was coming from county. So, you know, if we make sure our residents are signed up to everything, then that will help.
Thank you. Councilmember Wolf?
I appreciate the consideration of targeted and boosted ads. I think there's so much information out there that it's a good way to get our message across, but I think that's something we should really look into, but use it for specific messaging, not just, for very specific purposes, use the targeted. But I think that's so important in this day and age because that's how you really get your message out there. And for the .gov compliance, that's the way everything's moving. It was our assembly member who authored the legislation. I'm not sure if cities had the carve-out. I know that there was a lot of opposition, but I know that they're going to be coming back and this is the way it's going. So I highly support including that, the .gov compliance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I agree with everything that's said. I do feel too that in those moments of scrambling around during an emergency and during the storms, sometimes we were a little slow on our social media. So I would like to see us, you know, always be considering that and picking that up a notch because we were having to go to other sources. I know it can be done because some neighboring cities did it, so I know we can do it too. I have no problem with the .gov compliance and the only other thing that I would request that you look at is a lot of the websites nowadays have a, and I'm not that tech literate, so, but have some sort of a translation ability so that you could see agendas and see things in, you know, other languages. And so particularly Spanish would be helpful. And so I think that will bring in more people and engage more people into what's going on in the community. So if you could just take a look at that as well. Other than that, you have enough information, Mr. Hamburger?
I do and I appreciate all the feedback.
Mayor, can I jump in? And I apologize to open this can of worms, but if you're talking about translation, is our website considered ADA accessible and is that something that we've done?
Yes, we are in compliance with all the ADA laws and any new website that we look at, we, translation necessarily isn't a requirement, but it's something that we can do in addition to the requirements.
Okay, so we've met the requirements, but the translation would be in theory, in addition? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Wolf.
Okay, with that, I'm going to move into community services. So we have completed the joint community center grant implementation and that will be getting reimbursed very shortly. We have reviewed the DALLA Ride and AH GO program. The other goals will be completed by the end of this fiscal year and I believe they'll be going to the subcommittee in April. And we'll move to the goals for the upcoming year. Just want to highlight the Schumash Park restroom, which was identified as the next park improvement that we're currently working on. So kind of two-pronged right now, we're, we are going out to bid for the concrete and sidewalk work. If you recall, that was the CDBG program that the council authorized staff to go out for, so we're out for that. And then the restroom will be installed June, July of this summer. So we're moving, moving forward with that. And then for next year, the council had identified to implement the next park improvement. The subcommittee had looked at the Morrison Park playground or play area and the area around the playground. And so what I'm going to do is turn it over to our community services director to kind of highlight that and we need to get some feedback on this direction and I believe she has some good news to share with the council as well. Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Hamburger. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. Staff has been working with Ryan and Lindsay Goldman and the Rotary Club of Westlake Village for more than a year now on the Morrison Park Playground project. Their goal was to raise enough funds for the city to create an inclusive playground by replacing the entire place structure with new accessible equipment, including an updated porn play surface. The group has been working really hard on fundraising and to date, I'm happy to report that they've raised $200,000. The city council committed to the concept of this rehabilitation project in support of the fundraising, but there have been no general funds or grant funding committed to it yet. When the new playground is installed, the paths of travel will have to be renovated. The city council did identify and approve this as their next CDBG-funded project. The total cost of the project, including the paths of travel, is hovering around $600,000. How do we reach the total cost of the goal? The Rotary Club of Westlake Village continues to fundraise. The city has three funding sources. Measure A, which is the old Prop A through, with through Regional Park Open Space District of LA County, general funds and the CDBG funds. The CDBG funds will be used for the path of travel. There is approximately $90,000 in the Measure A fund that the city can access now. And if desired, the city council can direct staff to look at what general funds may be available in the coming year. Another option would be for the city to look at partners on the project. The city was recently approached by Ronnie Stone, the CEO of the Southeast Ventura County YMCA, with an offer to partner on this project. So I'm happy to report that the YMCA Board of Directors has a vested interest in exclusive opportunities for families and has offered to partner with the city with a $100,000 donation towards the project. A contribution of this size would close the gap on the total cost of the project to something closer than $100,000, which is very exciting. This item has been reviewed by the Community Services Subcommittee and with that, staff is going to respectfully recommend that the city council approve YMCA as a partner to the project. How could we not? Approve the donation from the YMCA for the project and approve the use of Measure A funding. And that concludes my report. Available for any questions.
Councilmembers, any questions for Ms. Councilmembers, any questions for Ms. Brink?
I'll start. So you started the report that we were at $200,000, but if we vote to receive this donation, we will be at $300,000 for the project?
That's correct.
And so that makes us, I mean, at the halfway mark?
More than halfway. And the other item on the table would be if the city council decides to tap into our annual allocation of Measure A, which is $90,000. That would inch us a little bit, that would put us up closer to the 400,000 mark.
Understood. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Councilmember Lopez?
Okay, wait, so help me with the math. We're at 400,000, but then you said 100,000 out of our general fund.
So the CDBG is the other gap, is another 100,000. So we're looking at, we're trying to get to 500,000 for the play equipment and the pour-and-play surface. The 100,000, that extra that takes us up to six, is including the path of travel, and CDBG will pay for that. So for the park structure, including the pour-and-play surface, we're at 500,000. And so 200,000 is from the Rotary Club of Westlake Village, 100,000 from the YMCA, puts us at three. And if the city council desires, we can tap into Measure A, which puts us at about 400,000, 390.
Got it.
Some change.
And then the CDBG?
And then there's a gap of 100,000.
So it would be approximately 100,000 that could come from our general fund?
Correct.
Okay. And then, just a question, you know, were there other projects that were being looked at with either the Measure A or the CDBG? No, CDBG we already approved, but for Measure A?
So for Measure A, probably two years ago during a budget workshop, there was no projects identified. I think we talked about your next project would go towards fixing up bathrooms. But with $90,000 in it, that's more of a maintenance as opposed to a large capital project. So it would be perfectly in line, the grant funding is available, replacing playground equipment is a perfect project for that. And I will say, that $100,000 gap, particularly the Goldmans continue to work. There's a couple of opportunities out there that they're still trying to hone in on. I personally have a couple that I'm gonna follow up on. And that is not, that, the 100,000, we haven't gone out to bid necessarily for what those, what the installation and things like that are gonna cost. So it's a rough estimate from our play equipment company. So we're estimating that there's about $100,000 gap that we're still working on.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Just curious, with the YMCA donation of 100,000, are they expecting any naming rights or anything?
They would simply love a plaque, some type of name recognition out there, that this is a project that they contributed to.
Right.
They're very much interested in partnering with us on Morrison Park, period. They would love to see that as an all-inclusive park. And, you know, there could be more amenities to come with that.
But we would also be giving a plaque to the Westlake Rotary as well, correct?
Correct, correct. And actually, that's a great point, Mayor Protam Sylvester. While the Goldmans are collecting donations, there will be a list of donors, so there will be a donor wall. And there'll be some aspects of the playground that have a legal sign near it that says that this organization donated. And that's all included, the way that's laid out is all included with our memorandum of understanding that we have with the Rotary. So yes, there will be multiple donor identifications out there, correct?
I'm looking forward to the completion, so I hope we can find the money. Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilmember Anstead, your thoughts on it?
I'm all for it, and I would like, I think the Measure A funding, and I would be all for it and approve all three.
Okay, so I'm gonna be the stick in the mud here, and I'm going to say that I'm excited about using the Measure A funding, but I can't sit here tonight and say I would be going into the general fund for 100-plus thousand until I know more how the budget's gonna look for this year. So, you know, I'm happy to have you bring it back and see where we can do it, but keep doing a great job and raising the money. And I know they just got another sponsor for about $10,000. I don't know if that was included in the 200. So it was just announced on Facebook, I think, today. And so, so just keep, let's keep working at it, and I'm willing to be open-minded and look at it. But as I said here today, I personally would not be able to commit to 100,000 plus from the general fund.
And if I can just clarify as well, for the council today, all we're looking for is direction that Morrison Park is gonna be our next focus, and then we will bring back all of the options for you to consider as we look at the budget and what opportunities there are in grants and all that kind of stuff.
I think everybody, do you all agree Morrison Ranch, the playground? Okay, great. All right, let's go on.
Okay, gotta keep talking. The next item we have for you this evening is the Department of Community Services celebrates the Fourth of July holiday on the Sunday after the holiday with a fun patriotic event during the summer concert in the park. This has usually been in the form of a fireworks show. After the Woolsey fire struck Agora Hills, the city council made a commitment to host this event with a celebration that would respect the concern from residents over the potential fire hazard that fireworks bring to a community like Agora Hills. It was decided then to substitute the fireworks show for something less of a risk, so instead, we hosted a laser show. The laser show has been in place for a few years now and has been well-received by the community. Last year, residents and attendees provided feedback to staff about the show not quite offering what they were looking for. So the laser show, to stay or not to stay? Those comments included that the laser show can't be seen from anywhere but the park, so if people were in the shopping mall, if you remember, a lot of people who watched our fireworks show would actually pull over and park in the parking lots over at Vons and Ralphs, sometimes along Cayman, all totally legal, but they would park away from the park. So if people were parking in the shopping mall, they would not be able to see the laser show. They also indicated that the fog required to produce the lasers was very difficult to deal with. It created a dark, confusing time in the park. And the weather has to be perfectly still for the lasers to reach their optimal viewing. So this evening, staff is presenting to the city council an option that would replace the laser show, and it would be a drone show. So let's look at the differences between a laser show and a drone show. The laser show is displayed in the park, as I mentioned, at a low level. It has a lot of fog. It is multicolored. The lasers are bouncing off houses and trees. It makes for a very fun environment. It is a 10 to 15-minute show that costs us about $15,000. The drone show, on the other hand, is up to 400 feet in the air. It would be launched from the Agora High School football field, and I've already had confirmation from the school district that they are supportive of us launching the drones from the football field. This show would be about 150 drones to the tune of $35,000, and it would be a 10 to 12-minute show that we would actually be able to select the animation and select the music, much like we do for the laser show. So it's really the difference between a laser show in the park or a drone show that's up in the air that can be seen from the neighborhoods all around. And we're looking at about an increase of about $20,000. And obviously, we didn't budget for that, because we just thought that the laser show was acceptable coming into last year's fiscal year. So that being said, we're throwing it out to the city council. If you're interested in doing it, we would love the opportunity to give it a try, but completely understand if it's not something that we can work in our budget this year, that we'll plan for it in the following years. We have discussed the drone show with the Community Services Subcommittee, so I invite my two members to comment on it. And with that, I will turn it back over to City Manager.
Okay, so we would love feedback on, or direction on this.
Does anyone have any questions first, on either of these items? Councilmember Lopez?
Just one question, and I'm not advocating for this, I just need it for comparison. How much was the fireworks show when we did it?
So the fireworks show was dramatically cheaper. It was probably more in the neighborhood of eight or nine.
Okay.
Yeah, about $9,000.
Okay.
And we were actually getting the better rate, because we hosted fireworks after the Fourth of July, so we weren't paying top dollar.
Got it. Okay, that's just my one question.
Thank you. Any other questions? So, well, I'll just start as a member of the Community Services Subcommittee and somebody who has seen a drone show. It's pretty phenomenal. I don't, you know me, I'm so competitive. I'd like to be the first city to be doing that. I don't know if that's a great reason, but it is really fun. It'll be seen from all over the city, and I think our residents would absolutely love it. And whether it's something that goes on year after year after year is a horse of another color. But for right now, it would seem to me that it's either a drone show, and what we talked about was either a drone show or just another concert in the park. Because the laser show didn't go over well, and we felt that the residents would not want to go back to fireworks show. So, you know, I'm open to hearing what everybody else says, but if you haven't seen a drone show, it's kind of new and happening, and it's very cool. So, anybody have any comments or thoughts about it? Councilmember Lopez?
I'm not like a concert-goer, but I know that they have drone shows at concerts, and people go bonkers for it. They go absolutely bonkers. I am with you in that I like to be trendsetter with some exciting things, so, you know, I would be game to try this and see what the response is. You know, I certainly wouldn't commit to this number, especially when we're coming a few years back off of eight or $9,000. I wouldn't want to commit year after year to this, but I would love to try it and see what the response is, because I think it would be super fun. I'm not so concerned about people seeing it from outside the park, because I think the idea is, like, come to the park, like, come celebrate with us. But I think people will come, so I would be game to try it.
Thank you. Councilmember Wolf?
Well, I do appreciate the wolf that was put there. So if I can request that that is, I think--
That's supposed to be a mountain lion. No, just kidding. Just kidding.
Those are some good ideas, actually. Let's take note of that. So this is kind of like our signature event, and it really brings the community together. And I thought the laser show was a novel concept, and I appreciate a creative concept and living in the high-fire risk. The cost, I mean, it is significant, $20,000 more, so that is of concern, but I do think that this is like our one big signature event, biggest signature event of the year, and so it's something I would be comfortable, and I appreciate the creativity.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Anstead? He was also, you were also on the committee, yeah.
And I'm fine with the drones. So I think it's, like you said, try it and see how it goes, and reassess.
Thank you. Mayor Protam?
Well, being a Brit originally, no. I think drones are wonderful, but I would be more comfortable waiting until we've done all our other budget items to see where we're at, because that is a lot of money. And it's an additional 20,000. And is that something that we're going to have to take away somewhere else to find? So until I know what our priorities are and how much those are going to cost, I would prefer to wait. When do we have to make this decision?
Well, the sooner we can, I mean, the sooner we can lock it in, the better, but we can certainly do a round of budget and see where we land.
Yeah, I mean, because drones are fantastic, I love them. But I don't want people to say, "Well, you cut this just to give us a drone show," you know? So I think we have to be fiscally responsible, so that's my input. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I think you--
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
That's not just for the community services, but that isn't on here. And that is, the issue of the plaque, is that something that we can please bring to the Subcommittee, that shouldn't be that costly? And I think it would, you know, be something that is appropriate at the community center? So maybe we can bring that as an item to discuss with the Subcommittee as part of these goals, like our, like our community member brought up.
Thank you, yes. For Beth Havering. And I know that Ms. Brink has already got some creative thoughts, and so let's bring it to the Subcommittee if nobody has a problem with that, and we can continue conversations about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So we're gonna move into our final subject area, which is the law enforcement fire emergency response. We've completed two goals that are identified there, with the Real-Time Crime and Disaster Center opening at the Lost Hill Station. And again, that has fire cameras and public safety cameras, and we're gonna be having an outreach to the community through the Sheriff's Department and their consultant coming up, I believe in April or May. Excuse me. And then the goals for next year are to continue funding the CERT program, our training, emergency supplies, continue working with Lost Hill Station as we work on the Real-Time Crime and Disaster Center. There were two goals that were asked by staff to bring forward. One is the CERT training, and I put alternative. LA County Fire is changing the manner in which they provide these services. Currently, they provide a CERT training program for each individual city that wants it. What they're looking at from kind of a cost and resource perspective is to do more regional, which means they could be holding something out in Palmdale or Lancaster at times, and you know, anybody that wanted to participate would have to go out there. So it was raised, concern raised to staff of looking at, would we be supportive of what's called "training the trainer," basically, and having someone, maybe a staff person as well as a member of a CERT, become certified the train, provide the backpack supplies, et cetera, for that. And then I think the real goal is just to try to get more people involved that are not already involved, and then, you know, just that, you know, emergency preparedness across the board for everybody. So that's the first. Second is the home hardening educational effort. And as you recall, we do have a grant program, and we are working with MRC on doing home evaluations. That is still going well, but as I think all of you are hearing, is that the insurance industry is making it very tough on homeowners in the very high-fire severity zone. And so the proposed goal that was brought forward by one of the council members is to look at an educational effort, putting some funding behind that, and trying to figure out how we can make sure that everybody's aware of all the things they can do to try to protect their home, and to make sure that they're able to secure insurance for their home as well. So with that, I'll pause and take feedback from the council.
Any questions about these two goals? I have no questions? Okay, so let's just chat about it. Councilmember Lopez?
Can I just bring back the flock camera issue for one more thing? I know that you mentioned that Mr. Odeva's gonna bring back a little bit of an analysis. Can I just ask that we include, can you, how many flock cameras do we have right now? Four?
Fourteen, I believe.
Oh, fourteen. So, but, so are there any on Thousand Oaks Boulevard? Basically, my question would be to, can we ensure, like, what I don't want is someone just to drive down Thousand Oaks Boulevard, end up in Thousand Oaks, and not be caught, because our flock cameras are only at the freeway entrances, and that same thing could happen on the south side of the freeway. We have a lot of, we have a lot of residential areas that are right next to the freeway, and particularly on the south side. So I wouldn't want people just coming and going on these arterial roads to get in and out of the city. So if maybe we can, when you come back with your analysis, if you can just include thoughts about making sure we have every entrance and exit, which we may already have, but I just want to make sure we have all of our neighborhoods covered.
Sure, we're glad to do that.
Okay, thank you. But that was just my only comment on that. And then my comments on the additional goals are, that's fantastic. I love CERT. I think they're chomping at the bit to be utilized more, and I'm happy to add that into the goal. And then the home hardening, I know that, like, Councilmember, Mayor Protam Sylvester's had some analysis on her house. I mean, it's really an amazing program, and so the more that we can do internally is fantastic. So I'm all for it.
Councilmember Wolf?
I appreciate Councilmember Klein Lopez's comments about the flock cameras, and I'm looking forward to hearing more about that, because we do have a lot of very porous, I guess, I don't know if that's the right term, but, close on and off the freeway, so thank you for bringing that up. CERT training's fantastic. I know we've given, provided some funding in the past, and we've seen that it's been put to great use, and it's such a great program. And the home hardening, I can absolutely move forward with that. The insurance issue is gonna continue to rise as carriers leave the state, so I appreciate the efforts on that. I can move forward.
Councilmember Anstead?
All for it. All good.
Mayor Protam?
Yes, I'm all for, all of that. I'm just curious, sorry, I should have done when it was staff questions. Does anybody know approximately what each camera costs, each flock camera?
We probably need to bring all that back, and I think it'd be more appropriate to bring in the report, so I can give you all of the analysis rather, I think that's the best approach.
Yeah, that would be great, just to know that. And also, the city's gonna be pushing out the information about the virtual town hall meeting coming up in the next couple of weeks about the homeowner's insurance problems, and we're gonna have the Insurance Commissioner Ricardo-- And we're going to have, the insurance commissioner, Ricardo Lara, will be on the town hall and Jackie Irwin. So, we'll get that-
April 4th.
Thank you. April 4th.
Thank you.
But the city will be sending out links for that so you can register.
We've, we've already done that as well and we'll continue to push that out.
Yes.
Good. Thank you. So, I, you know, I obviously support CERT a hundred percent and I would like us to be a little creative and perhaps we can give them more to do. I think they're just chomping at the bit, as somebody said, to do more. And I think that maybe we can even have them help us with some home hardening educational effort. So, I don't want to be a stickler again, but I still have that problem with that in parentheses, especially the zero to five feet requirement. I don't mind if going forward, we want to educate people that if they're going to redo their house, they should probably not do zero to five feet. I have very strong feelings about the city taking a position and telling people that they have to remove plants that are between zero and five feet because that's just not, that's where we're headed, but we're not there and it's probably going to be another year or two till we get there. So, again, I'm all for educating people. If you're going to do a new landscaping, best off not to put plants from zero to five feet. But by no stretch of the imagination should the city be encouraging people are getting involved in telling them that they have to remove them until we actually get there. So, with that, I'm good for a home hardening educational effort and I think we can move on.
Thank you again for that feedback. And the final item we're going to need direction on this afternoon is our community outreach grants discussion. And I'm going to turn it over to our city manager, Mayor Adava, to complete this item.
Thank you, City Manager Hamburger. All right. So, Madam Mayor and councilmembers, this, this item actually dates back to last year's budget discussion where Mayor Protam Penny Sylvester brought up, in regards to community grants, the idea of reconsidering how we distribute the community grants specific to the schools in, in our town. There was a discussion about whether or not the, the set amount of money should be set aside for the schools, as well as the possibility of the schools not needing to fill out an application like everyone else does that applies for the applications. So, at that point last year, the council was in agreement that the appropriate time to discuss this would be back at this year's goals workshop, which is why we're discussing it now. In December of last year, we did have a meeting with the subcommittee, which was Councilmember Lopez and Councilmember Wolf, where we did discuss this topic. And the, the committee can speak for themselves, but ultimately, the feedback was to continue with the status quo with the way that applications are currently taken in and not afford the, the district or the schools to have any special consideration with relation to the application process, but to take a more proactive approach in reaching out to the schools and the school district to let them know when the community grant process was open so that we can encourage them to go ahead and if interested and if they have a need, to go ahead and fill out an application. And so, staff did do that. The application process, like every year, opens in February, so we're currently in that process right now. It does close at the end of April. And really, this item is just to have that discussion as promised last year, to see if the council's on board, kind of moving forward with what the committee suggested, which is to continue with the status quo and, and just go forward with that proactive effort of reaching out to the schools. So, with that, that concludes it and I'd be happy to take your feedback.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Adava? I have a question. So, you reached out proactively to each and every school in Agora Hills. Have you done any follow-up or offered them assistance to fill out? It's, it's, you know, that package is pretty voluminous. And so, I'm just wondering if we're offering to help people or to guide them on how to fill it out?
Absolutely, Madam Mayor. That was a part of the initial discussion, really taking that proactive approach to say, hey, we're here for you. We're here to help. If there's something that you need us to do for you, we can, we can do that. So, all of that was part of the initial reach out.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments?
I would just like to comment and say thank you for doing that outreach. And I also personally reached out to some school board members to make sure that the information was going out. So, I think this is an excellent way to solve it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, anybody, how about some opinions on whether or not you are comfortable with keeping the grant program the way it is with the additional reach out to all the other schools? Or as Mayor Protam Sylvester brought up last year, it's kind of that, you know, the schools that have the proactive volunteers are the ones who always get the money because those people know how to fill out the forms and they have people to do it. And so, it kind of perpetuates itself. So, which I thought was really a great argument, but I'm glad to see that the finance committee has come together and agreed on something else. So, I don't know if anyone has any comments, but if that's what the subcommittee has come up with, I'm all for it. Go ahead.
I mean, I can comment as a, the finance committee member that's bridged over from, from Councilmember Wolf to Mayor Protam Sylvester and that is that, unfortunately, it's a really gray line with, blurry line with school groups because we have so many boosters that start in middle school. And so, you know, we, we do support those boosters in various ways. And so, if we were to, and, and you'll see this year on, on the finance committee, this is one of the most torturous things we do on the finance committee is, is try to figure out how to make these grants get stretched. So, I think because, you know, if, if we had a very simple setup where every school had one PFA, PTA type, type thing, then I think it would be easier. But because we have so many different boosters that we support, I think that outreach is the way to go. There is, there's no, I, I will say that I've been on the finance committee on and off over the past five, six years and, you know, these parent volunteers change. And so, there really isn't one advantage in, with some groups or other because they all change and they turn over so much. So, I think it's our outreach and our, our offer to apply and our assistance that is, is going to do the trick.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes. The other member of the committee, Mayor Protam Sylvester's idea was great, but in, in execution, it be, it was really difficult because there are so many boosters in so many different organizations within each school campus that it, the whole grant program really would, could just be, go to just the school programs. And so, I think working with Romero and came up with a really creative solution to improve the outreach. So, it kind of creates a more level playing field and I think that's what we were going for. So, I, I'm proud of the work that the committee did and staff did to, to get us here.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments? So, I think we have a party to attend with our volunteers. It's volunteer time. So, do we have, what are, next steps?
I'm going to close it out. I think I almost made it right on time. Just real quickly, next step, the subcommittees, the respectful ones will review the recommendations from today. We'll be back on May 8th for your second and final goal-setting workshop. Then we will look forward to our workshop in June and adoption and adjustments at the meeting of June 26th. So, with that, I thank the council and the community for your participation and I will turn it back over to you.
And thank you. And I would invite our speakers. Thank you for coming tonight. You may want to come back on May 8th and, and join us again. Thank you. So, let's see, now that we've done that, the city manager has what he needs, so we don't need any formal action requested. Are there any comments from staff? Okay. Any comments from the city council? Okay. Then please join us for light refreshments at the volunteer reception next door. The regular city council meeting will begin at 6:00 P.M. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you again.
To take their seats, we're going to get started with tonight's special meeting. Not officially a special meeting, and I'm just calling it a special meeting. Thank you. Welcome to the Agoura Hills City Council Meeting. Please silence, uh, this is City Council Meeting of March 13, 2024. Please silence all of your cell phones and other electronic devices. If you wish to speak or submit a written comment, please complete a comment card for each item and submit to the city clerk prior to the public comment portion of the item. I'm now calling this March 13, 2024, uh, City Council Meeting, and we welcome Boy Scout Troop 127 to lead us in tonight's Pledge of Allegiance.
Color Guard, advance. Audience, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color Guard, post the colors. Color Guard, salute. Two. Color Guard dismissed. Audience at ease.
Thank you very much, Boy Scout Troop 127. We really appreciate it when you come in and lead us in the flag salute. It's really a pleasure to see, um, what a great job you're doing and already getting involved in community events, so thank you for that. Uh, we had no closed session tonight, so there's no report. Um, at the request, um, I'm going to move on to the approval of the agenda. At the request of staff, item number five related to waste management, residential solid waste rate, is being pulled from tonight's agenda, and it'll be brought back for council consideration at a later date. Will the maker of the motion and second to approve tonight's event, agenda, please state your names?
This is Deborah Klein Lopez. I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
This is City Councilman Kristi Anstad. I'll second that.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, will you take a roll call vote?
Yes, Madam Mayor, with your permission, may I do a roll call first for the meeting?
Oh, did we not do? Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry, I didn't, uh, I missed that.
Councilmember Anstad?
Here.
Councilmember Lopez?
Here.
Councilmember Wolf?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Sylvester?
Yeah.
Mayor Buckley Weber?
Here.
Mayor Buckley Weber, you have a quorum, and we'll go right into the vote.
Okay, so you'll just do the vote now.
Councilmember Anstad?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Buckley Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Buckley Weber, you have approval, five to zero.
Thank you very much. And we will now move on to presentations, and for tonight, the reason I call it special is it's always special when all of you are here, for the annual City of Agoura Hills Volunteer Recognition. And I'm going to defer to our Community Services Staff. It's Nick Newkirk.
Thank you, Mayor Buckley Weber. On behalf of the Department of Community Services, we would like to thank you for attending this evening. As I call your name, please join us up front where a council member or the mayor will thank you on behalf of the City of Agoura Hills. These gifts are just a small token of our appreciation. Once you receive your gift, you are welcome to go back to your seat. We would like you to ask to hold your applause until the entire group has been called so we can hear everyone's name.
Thank you. Um, so, good evening. On behalf of the City Council, I would like to thank everyone for coming to the City of Agoura Hills Annual Volunteer Recognition Event. Tonight is about our hundreds of volunteers who contribute countless hours of their time and energy into making the City of Agoura Hills a better community. Thank you to all of the volunteers of 2023 here tonight. Your involvement was impressive and truly valued. You have no idea how important you are to the city and its function, its day-to-day functioning. Each volunteer offers their own unique skills in a variety of groups and committees. Tonight, we will honor some extraordinary people for going above and beyond their call for civic duty. This evening, the City Council is giving each volunteer a T-shirt with the I Heart AH logo with some special words paying tribute to one of our longtime residents and dedicated volunteers. We'll also be handing out stickers to put on your water bottles. Now, I'd like to ask, uh, before I ask a recreation manager, Nick Newkirk, Nick Newkirk, to begin, I just want to say that I'm going to be traveling tomorrow, which is why I'm wearing a mask, and so I'm not going to give any of you hugs or handshakes, but I want you to know that in my heart, I am, because you mean so much to, to me and the city. So, excuse me for not going that extra mile today, but, um, I got to get to DC tomorrow, so thank you. Um, now, I'm going to ask Recreation Manager Nick Newkirk to begin our volunteer reception event, recognition event.
Thank you, Mayor Buckley Weber. I would like to ask Mayor Pro Tem Sylvester to step down to the gift area to present our first few groups. The Cultural Arts Council advises the Department of Community Services on programs and activities as well as promotes arts and culture throughout the Agoura Hills area. Tracy Burson, Deanna Glassberg, Karen Kent, Priscilla Kromnick, Jennifer Miller, Alisa Spalding, and Danielle Wallsmith.
Thank you for modeling that.
The Community Concert Band Board. The concert band performs three times a year and proudly showcases nearly 50 members in the concert and jazz bands. The board advises staff on music selection and acts as a liaison to the band, and their concert is this Saturday at four o'clock at Agoura High School. Stephanie David, Brienne Foster, Robert Hackett, Derek Pova, Joseph Alex Reyes, and The One City, One Book Committee. This committee promotes literature with representatives from the local community, Agoura Hills Library, and the Los Virginist Unified School District that assist in planning the One City, One Book program. Nina Hull, Tina Johnson, Judy Carta, Karen Kent, Katie McGaha, Randy Paller, and Joan Yakavon.[1798.38][1798.38] I would like to ask Deputy City Manager Louis Selaya to now announce the CERT Team Member of the Year.
Perfect. Thank you, Nick. Each year, the CERT Board recognizes a CERT Member of the Year. For two thousand and twenty-three, the CERT Member of the Year is Diane Lemoine. As Diane's making her way up front, I wanted to kind of give you a couple little facts about Diane. Diane has been a longtime member of the CERT group, who has consistently participated in all events, from the biggest ones to the smallest ones. Additionally, Diane has a great positive attitude, is respectful and always pleasant to work with, is always willing to share good ideas with the CERT staff. She is an example of what our great CERT member will be, or is, and Diane is one of two CERT members who have put in the greatest amount of hours in two thousand and twenty-three. So, on behalf of the City of Agoura Hills, the council, your own CERT team, congratulations, Diane.
Before I announce the CERT team, if I can ask Councilmember Lopez to please join us at the gift table? CERT is a group of trained to assist in, let me try that again. CERT is a group trained to assist in the event of an emergency. This includes medical triage, traffic control, care and shelter. They provide first aid at community events. I do apologize if I butcher any names in advance. Greg Acevedo, Kirk Allegro, Kevin Austin, Danielle Blanc Choudry, Jennifer Buza, Dario Emanente, Audrey Fussell, Jim Fussell, Shirley Gu, Bob Hazard, Dana Hernandez, Patricia Higgins, Rob Jones, Norman Hume, Katia Lappins, Diane Lemoine, Christine Mazdem, Lee Magnoni, Bill Novick, Ann Novick, Ann Russell, Mark Paris, Justin Slaton, Sam Slosson, Paul Tablitio, Jeff Wachtel, Tony Wurttenbrooke, and David Wing. This is the governing board of the Agoura Hills Calabasas Community Center. Jim Bukowski and Brad Rosenheim. new commercial and residential development applications for compliance with the city's architectural design standards and guidelines. Francisco Bear and Albert Croft. The City Treasurer approves the city's investment of funds and also reviews the city's investment reporting. At this point, I would like to ask Councilmember Wolf to step down to the gift area to do the next few groups. The Community Service Days Committee assists staff in identifying projects, securing donations, recruiting volunteers, and overall implementation of this event. Ben Suber. Before we move on to our next group, I would like to invite three of our teen volunteers, Jerry Chang, Aditya Ram, and Vanessa Zhao, to say a few words about the teen program.
Testing, testing, one, two, three. I've always wanted to do that. I've always wanted to do that, so. Hello, my name, oh. Hello, my name is Aditya Ram. I'm a ninth grader at Agoura High School. I volunteer for the chess club, so shameless plugin. The next session begins April ninth, shameless plugin, fifteen dollars, shameless plugin. It's the recreational center. I started the chess club, I believe, last year, and I am very passionate about chess. It's been something I've been doing for a long time, since I was like five, but, five, I believe. I just, this is now going in properly. And I would just like to thank the community center, which gave me this opportunity to volunteer at it, and I'd like to thank everyone who supported me along the way. So, short and sweet, thank you.
My name is Vanessa Zhao. I am a sophomore at Westlake High School, and I joined the chess club with Aditya and Jerry in the fall of two thousand and twenty-three, and it's been an amazing journey ever since. Being a volunteer at Agoura Recreational Center has taught me so many things about how to create an engaging environment and how to become a more effective speaker and teacher, and I'm so grateful for all the amazing chances and opportunities that I have gotten from Agoura Recreational Center, and I hope to continue to serve the community. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jerry Chang, a volunteer for the beginner chess class held at the Agoura Hills Recreation Center every Thursday afternoon. I'm an eighth grader. First and foremost, I want to extend my sincere thanks to the City of Agoura Hills for providing me with this wonderful opportunity to share my knowledge and skills by teaching chess at the recreation center. It's truly an honor for me to be here with all of you, and I am deeply grateful for this meaningful experience. When I was five years old, I began learning chess and have been studying it for almost nine years. I constantly participate in tournaments and compete against opponents of various skill levels. Through learning chess, I've, I have learned how to focus, resilience in failure, respect my opponent, and overcoming the emotions. Naturally, I have also won some trophies and prize money, which was an unexpected bonus in my chess learning journey. Because I have experienced the benefits of learning chess, I'm eager to impart my knowledge and share my passion to other children who also love playing chess. Three years ago, during the sixth grade, when the pandemic was still ongoing, I decided to offer free online chess lessons to our youth. Now that the pandemic has ended, I am eager to give back to the community, where I've decided by sharing my knowledge of chess. I've been learning, I have been living in Agoura Hills for over ten years, and I hope to contribute my chess knowledge to where I live. Therefore, I contacted Agoura Hills Recreation Center's Sochi, Katie, and Robert at the Agoura Hills Recreation Center last year, and now I'm here today. I am incredibly grateful to them for providing me with this opportunity. I'll continue to do my best to give back to all the residents of the City of Agoura Hills. The rapid growth of our chess club is a result of everyone's collective effort. In the near future, we hope we will have the chance to begin organizing tournaments to promote chess throughout the entire community. Thank you, everyone.
The Teen VIP Program is a year-round program in which teens earn service learning hours by doing volunteer work with the city, such as working at special events, camps, classes, and much more. Gaetano Barbado, Natasha Bomaretti, Natalie Brender, Jerry Chang, David Cohen, Ishan Donashri, Colin Hook, Molly Murphy, Dasha Polich, Aditya Ram, Jules Young, and Vanessa The Community Services Coalition is responsible for monitoring and actively addressing quality of life issues affecting this community, such as senior services, emergency services, social mental health issues, and transportation programs. Joyce Cordori, Sue Lepisto, and Devin Rosenheim. At this point, I would like to ask Councilmember Anstead to step down to the gift area to present the next few groups. The Friends of the Agoura Hills Library Board of Directors. This group promotes functions, resources, and services wanted and needed for the library. They support educational and literary efforts and are the catalysts for gifts to the library. Diane Haupt, Eric Haupt, Robin Hellerman, Judy Carta, Kathy McBean, Mike Richards, Rose Friends of the Library promote knowledge of the functions, resources, services, and needs of the Agoura Hills Library. They assist in bringing funds for special needs beyond the command of the library budget, support educational and literary purposes, and stimulate gifts of books, magazines, desirable collections, endowments, and bequests to the library. Steve Allen, Irma Baker, Nancy Berg, Fran Blair, Devin Braun, Robin Britton, Susan Bukowski, Bobby Constantin, Rosanna Corral, Gregory Cox, Joe Di Mercutio, Ujia Dondetzi, Joanna, Joni Fields, Wayne Gabaldon, Debbie Hoffman, Nikki Jaffe, Bar Matas, Sam Mizili, Allison Merkel, Robert Muncher, Herb Oberman, Nina Olander, Betty Rowan, Susie Talanis, Tax Preparation. This volunteer is trained by the IRS and the AARP and assists the community in doing their yearly taxes for free. He's off doing someone's taxes. Our next group is the Planning Commission. At this point, I would like to turn it over to Mayor Buckley Weber.
Thank you, Mr. Newkirk. So, um, many of you probably already know that about two weeks ago, we lost one of our longtime planning commissioners, Janice, John Assuncheon. John was fifty-four years old. It's been heartbreaking and difficult for everybody at the city. He was an Agoura High graduate and has had his religious education down the street at Saint Jude's in Westlake Village. He came back to Los Angeles because he, back to Agoura Hills, his home, hometown, because he wanted to, and that's a real testament to how much John loved this community. John was a sports fanatic, and that's probably too simple of a word from what I heard at the funeral. He loved all of the LA teams from start to finish. He was involved in Agoura Pony Baseball for over a decade, taking the lead in umpiring and teaching others how to umpire. At the funeral, someone said that John consistently said that the umpire was always right, and there was no such thing as a bad umpire, which is how he lived his life. He believed in volunteerism. John was first appointed to the city's Planning Commission in two thousand and sixteen. Before long, he was chosen by his fellow commissioners as chair of the commission, at which he served with distinction. John had the unique ability to be a truly kind soul, hearing our residents, always thanking his fellow commissioners, and always praising staff. At the same time, he was no-nonsense in how he led meetings, making sure that everyone had an opportunity to speak while maintaining control and upholding decorum in the chambers. That's not an easy job. It wasn't how John voted on matters before him that gave me great confidence. It was the fact that I always knew he came to meetings well-prepared, open-minded, and did the work of a decision-maker. He was smart and a hard-working commissioner. That's what was important to me, regardless of how he voted, although I agreed with ninety-nine percent of his votes. It didn't matter. He, this is what you need and should expect of your local decision-makers. John served with such distinction and leaves a legacy of making tough decisions that helped shape this wonderful city. On a more personal level, John came to a lot of city events. Many of you probably saw him at this event over the years. He had, he and his two sons, James and David, ten and eight years old, always took the time to come by to say hello to me. John was forever upbeat, even during his trying times. I last, he, the last time I saw John was when I got sworn in as mayor. The last time I saw John was when I got sworn in as mayor. I didn't even know that he was as sick as he was, because he had a big smile on his face, gave me a big hug, and told me how great things were. He never had a bad word to say. In fact, you should all know that John passed away, I think, at the first week of March. But he was here to lead the February 15th Planning Commission meeting. As sick as he was, if you watch it on the website, he did a fabulous job, and he passed away within about a week after that. So, he just, he wouldn't have missed the meeting. That's just who he was. In fact, John will be sorely missed by all of us at the City of Agoura Hills, and so many of us, the entire planning commission, and the entire city council, our director heads, our staff. We were all at the funeral this week. Actually, it was just yesterday, so you'll have to, it's still very fresh. Everyone loved John and has fond memories of him. He leaves, he leaves behind his lovely, wifeful gene, his sons, James and David, his parents, his siblings, his in-laws, and a community that is in mourning. His memory will forever be a blessing. So, with that, I'm going to honor John and have the planning commission come up, and I can't thank you all for being here, because I know how difficult it was to lose John and that you were all very close to him. So, if I can have the planning commission come up.
The Planning Commission. If I can ask Buckley-Weber to stay at the gift table? Thank you. Our Tennis League Coordinator. This individual plans and implements the men's tennis leagues at the Agoura High School Tennis Courts. The Senior Program Volunteers donate time and skills to facilitate and maintain some of the ongoing senior program activities. Mario Carone, Roberta Konstantin, Susan Sergo, Bruce Fleck, Marilyn Guild, Estelle Halsey, The Reyes Adobe Days Executive Committee. This committee plans and organizes all events within the Reyes Adobe Day celebration, while the volunteers assist in the implementing of the activities, such as Senior Fiesta, Day at the Adobe, the Rad Parade, and the Rad Ride. Jennifer Johnson, Pete Lee, our Chair, Randy Peller, Amanda Pullos, Jody Regan, Jeff Wachtel, Gemma Wildermuth, Ellen Wall, and Jerry Wolfe. At this point, I would like to turn it over to Mayor Buckley-Weber for a special in memoriam presentation.
So, thank you. Here I am again. Can you hear me okay? Okay. I'm here to now tell you about one of our top volunteers, Ellen Wall, who passed away in 2023. Ellen Louise Wall was born on May 30th of 1934 in Detroit, Michigan. She moved with her family to California when she was a year and a half old. Her parents owned a baby store in the Fairfax District called Kitty Town. I feel like I know that place. When Ellen was old enough, she jumped in and began to work there. Ellen grew up in Los Angeles, attended Fairfax High School, LA City College, and Woodbury College. Ellen married her love, Victor, who served in the Army in Korea back in 1954. They had four daughters, who are here tonight, Bonnie, Nancy, Janice, and Laura. They raised their girls, and after all these years, she still resided in Agoura Hills. Ellen was a very involved volunteer while raising her girls. She served on the PTA as a Girl Scout leader, on the Foundation for Junior Blind, as a volunteer for local community organizations, and as a docent. Ellen was also very creative and always made sure that her girls were exposed to the arts, and she was an artist herself. The girls say that growing up with their mom, every day was a craft day. She had a love for music and the theater, always singing theater musical songs while the girls did their chores. She sewed, she baked, and she was an amazing cake decorator. She would eventually teach cake decorating classes in our recreation program. Ellen was involved, excuse me, in lots of Agoura Hills groups and committees. She attended every performance of the community concert band. She served on the Senior Advisory Committee, was a docent at the Reyes Adobe Historical Site, served on the Reyes Adobe Days Executive Committee even in 2023, and she took it upon herself to get involved with emergency services by joining CERT. That's why you heard her name so many times tonight. Most notably, Ellen was an amazing artist, being a watercolorist extraordinaire. She painted the most beautiful landscapes and natural scenery. It was only fitting, as she was a ray of sunshine to so many. Ellen passed away just before Reyes Adobe Days on October 4th of 2023. She was loved and supported by her sisters, Deanna and Tricia, her four daughters, son-in-laws, her grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. Ellen was your biggest cheerleader and had an unforgettable smile. She will be greatly missed by many. The first time I actually met Ellen was at this event, and it probably was in 20, it was probably like 2007 or 2008 when I was on the planning commission. And I was sitting in the back, where Kate Anderson is, and this woman was sitting in the front, and she kept getting up, and she kept getting up, and they kept calling her up. And I finally, at the end of the event, I said, "I have to meet this woman. Who is this lady?" And I went up and met her, and talk about being the cheerleader that she was. She was one of my biggest cheerleaders and supported me every time I ran for office and was always there with her big smile. So, I thank her. May she rest in peace. I would like to invite her family to step up and join me as the city council presents Thank you. I'm gonna take this and show it to you. And I do have to say that we also attended Ellen's funeral, and it was so lovely. I told the girls, I mean, I know that's a weird thing to say about a funeral, but it was lovely. There was dancing and singing, and it was just, it was so exemplary of her life. And she, we really miss her a lot. Yes, she did. Yes. Oh, let me get down there and get a picture with you. And I do have to say about her sister, Deanna. Deanna was always by her side. I don't know that I ever saw Ellen without Deanna close by, so thank you for being such a special sister. Thank you. We loved her. I know she loved Agoura. Thank you so much. So, with that, again, the annual volunteer recognition event is the city's way of thanking all of you and the other hundreds of volunteers who aren't here for the thousands of hours that you've donated over the past year. And a special thank you to our three new volunteers from the chess club. Thank you for that. I'm a chess player, so I know it's a lot of fun. This evening is just a small token of our heartfelt appreciation for all of your time and energy. It's people like you that make the City of Agoura Hills a great place to live. Again, from the bottom of all of our hearts, I know I speak for everybody here, we thank you so much. So, be safe, and thank you for coming tonight. Thank you again. Sadly, we have to get back to business. You think we come and just party all the time? Bye, Jerry. Well, that was fun. Thank you. We're now going to move on to Intergovernmental Special Purpose Committee and Departmental Reports. And I'm going to start with it's Women's History Month. This month is Women's History Month, which is an annual celebration that takes place in March, designated by Presidential Proclamation. The month is set aside to honor women's contributions in American history. The City of Agoura Hills is honored to join the celebration this year. In the lobby of city council chambers, there will be a new display of banners commemorating Women's History Month. We expect them to be up in the next day or two. The banners celebrate iconic individuals important to the community, to the City of Agoura Hills, and to our nation's history. Here are the women that the city has chosen to celebrate. And Amy and I had a lot of fun going back and forth. There are so many great women, we could have had, you know, 9,000 banners, but we tried to, you know, have a broad spectrum of women who have done great things. So, here's who we have. Simone Biles, an American artistic gymnast, the most decorated gymnast in American history, and widely considered one of the greatest gymnasts of all time. Dolores Huerta, an American labor leader and civil rights activist, who with Cesar Chavez, a co-founder of the United Farm Workers Association, which later merged with the Agricultural Workers Organizing Committee to become the United Farm Workers. Kitaaji Brown Jackson, an American lawyer and jurist, who is an Associate Justice of the Supreme Court of the United States. Nominated by President Biden, she is the first Black woman and the first former federal public defender to serve on the Supreme Court. Georgia O'Keeffe, one of the most significant artists of the 20th century, known for her contributions to modern art. She is an American modernist painter and drafts woman, who is one of America's most important and successful artists. And lastly, Sally Ride, an American astronaut and physicist. She became the first American woman and the third woman to fly in space. We encourage our residents to visit the banner display, which will be displayed in the windows of the council chambers. Residents can also look forward to future exhibits celebrating various heritage months. Thank you for that. Now, we'll move on to the Clean Power Alliance and defer to Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I love the banners. I love the honors, so thank you for leading that. Well, thank you. I wanted to take this moment and let you know that I am very happy and proud to announce that I have been elected Chair of the Board of the Clean Power Alliance. So, if you'll humor me, I just want to say a few things about Clean Power Alliance. So, as a reminder, CPA is the locally controlled clean energy provider for 32 member cities, moving up to 35 this month, and some unincorporated areas in Los Angeles and Ventura Counties. We provide clean renewable energy at competitive rates, and we are California's fourth-largest electricity provider, behind the big three, SCE, PG&E, and San Diego, gas and electric. But we are, and this is the most exciting, we lead the nation, the nation, in serving the most customers with 100% renewable energy. So, we are the largest renewable energy provider in the nation. I wanted to share a little bit of history. CPA was founded in 2017, so this was before I was on the council, and knowing that I was a strong advocate for reducing our carbon footprint, I was approached by some names that you might find familiar, Fran Pavly and also Gary Giraud. They reached out to me, and they said, "You need to go to the city council meeting. You need to get the city council to be thinking about..." Except, it wasn't called Clean Power Alliance. It was so far, long ago, it was called LA CCE, the Los Angeles Clean Choice Energy Endeavor. And it's a, and so I came to the council meetings. I stood at that podium. Elise Buckley-Weber was on the council, and I advocated for joining this venture, and I was happy that the council agreed to join. At the time, we did so at the lean default, which was 35% clean energy. And when I decided to run in 2018, you know, clean energy and reducing our carbon footprint was a very big policy platform for me, and once elected, I was appointed to serve on the board. I joined on the executive committee. Then I was the Chair of the Legislative and Regulatory Committee, and now the Board Chair. But I did want to note that here in this room, championing our move with the rest of you to move to 100% green renewable default rate for our cities and businesses is, will always be one of my proudest accomplishments as a council member with you all. And in that moment, our city instantly cut our GHG emissions by 10% in one And in that moment, our city instantly cut our GHG emissions by 10% in one fell swoop. So thank you for that. I'll finish with a few more fun facts. I'll wrap up. Just to let you know, Agora Hills' participation rate is 90%. You can opt out of CPA, and most people stay in it. Over 8,000 customers of ours, or 96% of our town, is receiving 100% green, clean, renewable energy, which is amazing. And together with the other cities and unincorporated areas, since 2018, we've avoided an estimated 10 billion pounds of GHG emissions. And that's the equivalent of planting and growing 75 million trees. We are way, way ahead of the benchmarks set by Senate Bill 100. The 2030 benchmarks that are set in place, we hit a few years ago, Clean Power Lines. So that's the good news. It's not all rosy. We're a little bit of a victim of our own success. Being able to procure the renewable resources that we've promised, this is a seller's market. It's huge challenges. The energy sector is an extremely volatile one. The science, the policy, the financing, it's all very complicated. So as I step into the role of Chair, I'm trying to lead with a steady hand to ensure reliability, affordability, sustainability, and always through the lens of environmental justice. So it's a huge honor for me personally, but I want to say more than anything, it's a feather in the cap for Agora Hills because we've always been a leader in climate action and advocacy, and so I'm honored to represent both CPA but also the city of Agora Hills in this role. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Lopez. And people thought that the wildlife crossing put us on the map. Now we have the Chair of the CPA to put us on the map as well. So good luck with that. And I just want to say, it's a bit of history, since I don't remember who was around, but that was not an easy vote to go to 100%. It sounds easy, but it was during 2020, and it was a three to two vote, and we just decided that we should just pull the Band-Aid off quickly and just go for it, because it was like the prices weren't going to go up for like another nine months, as I recall, or another year. And it's just been great. And most of our residents have, you know, stayed in at 100%. So we're very proud of that. That's great. Great job, and good luck. So next, are there any reports from staff? Are there any reports from city council?
I would just like to report in on the International Women's Day celebration that we held here at our event center. I'd like to thank staff. It was put on by the Las Vergenes Municipal Water District. So please thank everybody there. Councilmember Wolf, it was a very successful day, and I'm just so sorry that you weren't well enough to be with us.
I know. I missed it. And it was something I was looking forward to since 2020. So it was pretty sad to miss it. Which is why I'm going to DC tomorrow, and I am wearing a mask tonight. Nothing's getting in my way now. Okay, let's see. Next, we're going on to public comments. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items not listed on the agenda that are under the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. If you wish to distribute something to the city council, please do not approach the council dais. Hand your item to our city clerk, and she will distribute to us on your behalf. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Persons addressing the city council shall not engage in disorderly conduct that disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. I will now defer to the city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Buckley-Weber. No written public comments have been received, and no speaker cards have been submitted.
Thank you. And we will move on to the council consent calendar. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items on the consent calendar. I will now defer to the city clerk.
No written public comments have been received, and no speaker cards have been submitted.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the city council on the consent calendar? Councilmember Lopez?
I don't have a question, but I do just want to thank you and whoever worked on the land acknowledgement statement. I think it is a very beautiful statement. I loved reading it. I know it's a living statement that could change and morph into something new, but I just wanted to thank you for doing that, and I'm happy that it's on the consent calendar.
Thank you. And thank you to staff for taking the time to really reach out to, you know, tribal elders all in the region and to get the best statement that we could, best acknowledgement. So thank you for that.
Councilmember Lopez beat me to it, but I want to thank you too, Mayor, for really spearheading this. It's very appreciated, and thank the staff for looking into this.
Well, thank you, and I wouldn't be able to do it without the rest of you. I know how you feel about these issues, so I assumed that this was going to be something we could all agree on. Okay, so any other questions?
I don't want to pull, but I would like an amendment to the minutes because our city clerk very accurately reported what I said, and I misspoke. So on page two, where it says Councilmember Sylvester reported on attending the Wildlife Mitigation Alignment Webinar, it was actually the wildfire. So if we could just make that amendment. Thank you.
So I'll now call for a motion in a second to adopt the consent calendar with Mayor Protem Sylvester's amendment.
Mayor, okay, sorry, go ahead.
This is Councilmember Wolf, and I'll make a motion.
Mayor Protem Sylvester seconds.
Thank you. And we'll defer to the city clerk for a roll call.
Councilmember Anstead?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Buckley-Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Buckley-Weber, you have approval, five to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now move on to a discussion, action, item number five. As mentioned at the start of the meeting, at the request of staff, this item has been pulled and will be brought back at a later date. We ask that public comments be held for when the item is presented. I don't see anybody here for that, so I'm relieved about that. Let's move on to item number six. Our next item is a discussion to consider the adoption of Resolution Number 24-202058, adopting a landscape guidance program for residential properties and making a finding of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act. I will now defer to Community Development Director Denise Thomas for the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, Honorable Counsel. I am here with joy to present a program to you that will hopefully be well-received in the community and will give some people some relief. As a little bit of background, we had some issues during the drought period where people's landscape was dying, but our code requires it to be living. And people were looking for an alternative to the water-loving landscape that they had. The city manager asked me to look into options that we could present, and the item that Valerie Darbooz, our associate planner, is going to present to you is our recommendation for addressing that need. With that, I turn it over to Valerie.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Tonight's presentation is about the implementation of a low-cost expedited landscape renovation review program. This is a voluntary program made available to residential property owners. So currently, the landscape review for a residential property is done as part of new development, which takes several weeks until such time the project is ready to be presented to the planning commission. An in-depth review of the irrigation plan is also done during the plan check process to verify compliance with a water-efficient landscape ordinance. Fees and deposits are collected to pay for the city landscape consultant's time to review those plans. Rarely does staff review landscape plans for renovations on existing residential property, which is where the landscaping and the irrigation are most likely to be outdated and where transformation should occur. In keeping with the state's regulation, renovations over 2,500 square feet in area would also require a conformance with the water regulations. Renovations under 2,500 square feet are not required at this time to comply with what we call MOELO, the Water-Efficient Landscaping. But there is an opportunity for cities to review planting that would reduce the water use of the property. So the program that is presented to you tonight and is intended to facilitate the review process for property owners in upgrading their water-dependent landscaping without the mandatory upgrade of the irrigation system. So this program approach is to encourage the use of drought-tolerant and native plants, which would indirectly reduce the water use outdoors. The goal is for residents to be cognitive of their planting water use and adjust the water use to their plant needs. A large group of single-family residential properties have front yards of that size or smaller and could benefit from the low-cost program. As such, there's an opportunity to address the deteriorating landscaping caused by recurring droughts that could affect property value. Although we've received a lot of rain lately, the future of water availability remains uncertain. Other issues have surfaced also, which is the extensive use of hardscape and the use of artificial products. The landscape design can barely be fairly simple and would only need to identify items like turf surfaces, placement of types of plants, so their water use is known. Hardscape surfaces, surface covered with inert materials, and also could include fruit trees. Fruit trees are not subject to the water requirements, restrictions. The purpose is not intended to be punitive, but rather advise residents before they undertake renovations that could turn costly, if not done with water reduction measures in mind. Indirectly, the program would address the cap goal number five in disseminating information on ways to reduce potable water use for irrigation. So the tools and the process, since the task to renovate can be daunting for residents, staff put together a how-to customize packet with instructions on how to submit to the city, general guidance on landscape design, plant materials, maintenance, and other tips on water reduction measures. The program would review the proposed irrigation and encourage the upgrade of the entire system, but not seek mandatory compliance to the existing system as a whole. The plan would be reviewed by the city consultant, city landscape consultant. Residents would benefit from the expertise of a licensed landscape architect at a reduced cost of $350, whereas the minimum review cost for a full review would be a minimum of about $2,000. It is anticipated that the turnaround time for comments and review would be about two weeks, assuming an average caseload for the consultant. So residents would be asked to submit a landscape plan electronically to staff, ideally prepared by a landscape designer, showing the proposed design. The resulting effect of the program would be to reduce the irrigation water, encourage the diversity of plant, reduce the frequency of mowing, reduce the use of chemical fertilizers, maintain aesthetics on the property, and improve natural drainage. So the residents would be asked to submit an application for tracking purposes that would also be used by the city landscape consultant for recommendations and restrictions. The main component of this packet would be the guidelines, which provides instructions on how to submit, limitation of the program, guidance on plant selections and coverage, and when to plant during the year, how to go about removing existing turf, landscape maintenance tips, resources for finding plants and design concepts, references to outside agency regulations and programs, and redeem materials. So it includes three sample front yard layouts, and one for the interior lot, a corner lot, and a wider lot with equestrian facilities. These layouts have already have basic information that is typically found on a landscape plan and can be used as a starting point for the design. It also includes a plant list with plant sizes and water use and sun exposure. So residents can select a plant type based on the size and shape of the planting area they're working with. It also includes an illustrated, excuse me, list of recommended trees, shrubs, and ground cover with notation as to what type of plants are native, California native. It also includes design resources from the California Native Plant Society and other agencies. A contact information list, a handout is also provided for the landscape consultant and the oak tree consultant. And the event coordination is required between the review of a landscape plan, the protection of oak trees. And currently, the landscape consultant is available on Tuesdays, as is the oak tree consultant, with staff addressing questions on other days. And the packet also includes a list of nurseries where native and drought-tolerant material, plant material, can be purchased. And finally, last but not least, it also includes a handout from the Los Angeles County Fire Department about maintaining a defensible space, which addresses ornamental vegetation in proximity to structures, as you know, spacing of planting, deadwooding of existing trees, and other aspects of property maintenance. Additionally, this program would be coordinated with the city home hardening program, which provide grants to improve the conditions of residential properties and with a goal to reduce a potential fire. And we would also continue to work with our partner agency, the Las Vergenes Municipal Water District. The district passes on savings on turf removal, installation of controllers, free mulching, and the like. The districts also can also disseminate marketing material to raise awareness of the city program and their own programs to our residents through their billing system. So the program would be in place for at least one year, and at the end of the year, the program would be evaluated for areas of improvements and/or cost adjustments. The goal is to keep an ever-growing source of information on the website and through social media. The program would also be a conduit for new state and regional agency regulations that could potentially affect our residents. The program, while being developed, was presented to the Environmental Responsibility Subcommittee last year, and staff received positive comments. The members recommended working with partner agencies to raise awareness of the program and their regulations. As such, staff recommends that the city council adopt the landscape guidance program this evening and requests staff to bring an update of the success of the program at a future hearing one year from the date of its adoption. The adoption of this program is done by resolution, which is attached to your packet. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Valerie. We appreciate it. That was a good presentation. Before we move on to public comment, does any council member have any questions of staff? Councilmember Wolf?
You got me first.
I have a lot of comments after this, but a few questions.
Let's start with the questions, if you don't mind. That'd be great. Thanks.
The first question is regarding dissemination of this information. Besides the billing through Las Vergenes, what's kind of the rollout strategy to make our residents aware of this fantastic program?
So we have, we've created a page for our website as well, and we've done, we're anticipating doing also through social media.
So, well, are we thinking about making acorn ads or anything like that, or is this not the right time to talk about? I mean, because this is really robust and...
Denise Thomas, Community Development Director. We haven't had a plan to put it in the acorn. The acorn ads are expensive, and we didn't budget for that. But our goal is to work with the communications team to try and at least hit our socials, make sure that it's on the website and that it's readily accessible. We probably won't have very many handouts at the counter because we're trying to go paperless, so it would all be done electronically. We're open to suggestions. If you have other suggestions, just feel free to share them, and we're open to that.
Okay, great. I really appreciate that. My second question is regarding the application process. So folks, they fill this out, and one of the things that is required is understanding of utilities. How fully baked out does that need to be? Does it need to be for the residents? Do they need to know where their electric line is, their sewer line is?
Thank you, Councilmember Wolf. No, at this point, it's a very basic plan that identifies their, the area that they were to work on. So there's no, at this point, we're only advising on the planting. And during the process of installation, they're also advised to contact, reach out, dig alert to make sure that they are not touching any underground utility, if that's what you're referring to.
Well, I thought that in the application, you had to list where the utilities are. So you don't need to do that? So you don't need to do that? You don't need to, that's not one of the requirements?
It wouldn't necessarily, Denise Thomas, Community Development Director. It doesn't necessarily require you to do your dig alert and identify where they're going to be at the time for us to approve your plan.
Okay.
But by the time you install, it would be irresponsible to have you have residents digging if they didn't know where their easements were. We would look at easements that are recorded, that we can easily see, that they might provide us information with to ensure that we're not in any public utilities, like the sewer easement, et cetera. But for the actual underground utilities, we would make them prove that out before they got permission to actually dig.
So would the city be, would that be the city helping with that, or would that be the resident?
They would have to, they would have to tell us where the utilities are, and we would compare it to whatever records we have. If we don't have any records, then we would just take their word for it.
Okay, because, I mean, that could be hard. I mean, I don't know where my utilities are. Other question is, so someone goes through this program, they give the awesome advice. What happens if they ask for recommendations of who's going to do the work, like actual digging and the planting of the plants? Do we just say that's your own responsibility?
We do not, we only have a list of professionals they can reach out to in terms of what type of licensing they have, so they know who to talk to. But we do not recommend, we do not have a list of landscape contractors, designers, installers, or gardeners.
And so, that's on the resident? We provide the plan, the resident needs to do their research to find the actual people to do the work?
Yes, and any license is, information is accessible to the state. There's a website for a number of professions.
Okay. And can we, are we going to be able to tell people that?
We can direct them to websites with...
All right, that's my question.
Yes, absolutely. And that's why the city landscape consultants has a lot of experience and has a lot of resources to use, to present to the residents.
Okay, that's fantastic. Thank you. And then my last question, it's a question comment, but on here it talks about the metropolitan rebate at $2. Much to my chagrin, I just did the program, it's going to be $3, but it hasn't changed officially, but it will be changing in the next, like, few weeks, so just keep an eye on that before we send out publications.
Absolutely.
So that's all of my questions. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you. My question is regarding the defensible, defensible space piece of the packet. I know that obviously the defensible space is going to be a big part of the consulting, but I don't see specifically the zero to five clearance. And in some of the pictures of the landscape plans, there are some plant suggestions right up against the house. So are we going to revise those so that they're more than five feet out, or is that already five feet out? I just want to make sure that we are incorporating the, I know we're incorporating defensible space, but specifically the zero to five.
At this stage, we, you guys haven't given us direction to change our code to require the zero to five for the defensible space, so we're not actively enforcing that. So if someone were to come in and they say, "I want to do it," and they're not removing, we would go ahead and assist them with doing it, but this program doesn't require them to do it, and this exhibit we receive from the fire department, so it was, it's put out by them. So right now, until you guys direct us otherwise, we're just providing them with the information that exists, exists. But if at such time you guys decide to tell us to go and take a look at the, at the defensible space, both the zero to five and the others, at that point, we would bring something back to you. So for right now, we're only using the ordinance that's, as it's currently adopted. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah. I'll save some of my thoughts on that till deliberation.
Okay. Any other questions? Mayor Protem?
Yes, I do have a problem with the zero to five, as you brought up, Councilmember Klein-Lopez, just because having just gone through getting, being dropped by one insurance company because they wanted absolutely nothing in the zero to five except rock or cement. So I don't want to be misleading our residents by saying this is something we've endorsed, and then they spend money doing this, and then when they go to get their homeowner's insurance, it's denied, and then they could come to us and say, "But you said this was all right." So I am very wary of that now, just having been burnt myself. And also, I'm just, can you just walk me through the stages? So I have a front yard. I want to change it to make it more drought tolerant. Do I, I have to take one of these examples first before I get the landscape from the city? I'm a little confused on the...
So this program, this program is intended to be an option. If you are a homeowner and you want to change out your front yard, or your side yard, or your rear yard, you have every opportunity to contract with your own designer and create a planting plan that suits your needs. What we were seeing is some, what we were seeing is that it's difficult, not everyone can afford to go and redo their whole front yard.
Right.
And so we were having issues with people who were noncompliant, because we have standards in our code that would require you to have a living landscape, and we were going through a drought, and I was, I was asked to look into program. So this is intended to be an option, not the preferred method. So the way you would change out your yard if you wanted to, the most important thing is for us to try and make sure that your water consumption is consistent with what the state requires our water consumption to be. So if you choose to use this program, you would contact staff, you would have an opportunity to, you would pay your fee, and you would have an opportunity to sit down with the landscape, sorry, the, yeah, the landscape architect that we have on staff, and they could help guide you toward what a planting plan would be. You would get that design, you would pay your money.
Okay, great. So they would give me the design, and then I would come and submit the plan. So I don't have to come up with a plan before I meet with the landscape.
Not unless you want to.
Right.
If you wanted to, you could.
Yes, no, because I know it's extremely expensive. I've had quotes from like 12 to 2,000 for someone just to show up.
It's very expensive.
Yes, so that's great. So then I could just say, "I'd like to make an appointment." Would they come to the house, or you would go to the city?
You would come to the city.
And meet here.
Meet here, and then once it's installed, we would do an inspection, and then we would go to the house.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ansted, any questions?
No questions.
I just have a couple of questions. Let me start back here. Can you go over the $350 deposit with me? So that gets you your meeting with staff and with the landscape architect, and that's it, right? Then to do the work, or if you want more, then you're going to pay, you wouldn't be paying our landscape architect, right? You'd go out to bid, so to speak, or go find your own person to do the work.
Madam, yes, it's correct. So the cost is just to pay for the landscape consultant's time to review your plans and discuss with you. So we embedded in this cost is his time to review, exchange some phone calls, meeting you at the counter, going over the plans, and possibly, depending on the complexity of the installation, it's either the consultant that goes out to the site and inspects, or staff would go out and take, inspect. And we would like to take pictures to document what has been done at the end and potentially, you know, display, you know, how our residents are addressing this program.
Is that $350 payable to the city of Agora Hills, or is it payable to the landscape?
No, no, no. It's paid to the city of Agora Hills.
Okay, and as a follow-up to the Mayor Protem's question, if she doesn't have a plan, she pays the $350, will the landscape consultant give her a plan?
So, so these are our basic plan to assist you. So the idea is that you come up with your design, right? You've got to understand your property, design, style, and your taste and your needs, and you would come up with a design. We are providing you for, because a landscape plan typically contains a certain amount of information that is needed to be reviewed. So we've provided a template, basically, with a list of plants with a little number, and you just put that number into the plan, and you add your name on it, you put your street name on it, you add some basic information, and the consultant will work with you to expand on that design.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then let's see. One of my other questions has to do with the native and drought-tolerant plant resources, and I'm not sure if there's certain qualifications to get on that list, but I just was wondering if you could check out Growing Works in Camarillo. They raise money from the sales of their plants for Turning Point Foundation. It's all native, and it's really a fabulous place, and so you're kind of, you're donating as well as getting new plants. And again, I don't know what you're looking for exactly, but it's Growing Works in Camarillo. If you can just randomly add that, I think that would be a good one for people. Let's see, and then...
And the list can always change. It's living document. It can change, it can be updated. If we get feedback from the community, we can change that as well.
Okay. And somewhere in here, you would give the people that, the links so that they could find the contractors and all that?
Yes.
It would be in the information. Okay. So then getting into the defensible space, you guys are going to laugh. Don't laugh, but this is a good document, because it says here, it talks about what zone zero is, but it doesn't say it's mandatory. It just tells you, going forward, don't plant, you know, you don't want to do this, you don't want to have limbs, you know. So I think that's really helpful, but I do agree with, you know, Mayor Protem, that we probably don't want to have pictures with plants that are right up against walls because, you know, that could come back to bite us later on. And so, again, it's something to think about. But I thought this was good literature from the fire department, and I'm very pleased to say that they're not saying it's mandatory, they're not saying you have to take out stuff. They're just saying, here's what zero to five is, and here's some good ideas to do to protect your property. And they're all good ideas. So, so I was happy with that. And then the other literature you gave from the Native Plant Society, I think that's all really good and would be helpful. And I don't have any further questions.
Oh, could I just say one more thing? Sorry, I was at a friend's house today, and she was showing me her, I think it, is it diamanda?
Diamanda.
Diamanda, silver diamanda, ground cover. I was amazed.
Isn't it?
So I was just wondering, can we add it to the ground covers? Because I don't, I don't see it here. But I was really impressed. I thought, wow, I could have a lawn with that and be happy. It's very hardy. Once it's established, you barely water it at all.
Yes.
And it doesn't grow more than three inches tall, and it flowers in the spring. Thank you.
Any questions? Councilmember Ansted?
I just gonna, Mayor Protem was saying, I think that's what they plant next to the highway on the freeway exchanges and all that, what she's talking about.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay, then we will move on to public comment. I will now defer to the city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Buckley-Wever. We did not receive any written comments, nor do we have any speaker cards.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any other further questions before we move into deliberation? Okay, so let's move on to deliberations. Why don't we start with you, Councilmember Ansted?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I think, I think this is a great program. I mean, I think a lot of our residents were dealing with the drought, and they are also dealing with, I think, probably high water costs, and a lot of them don't want to have to pay the cost of that water, so I think that's why you're seeing more of them go to this drought-tolerant landscaping, and I think it's great that our city's going to offer a low-cost service to be able to allow them to do something in their front yard that's not scatter, like that we have so many different landscapes that don't really match this area. So having a landscape architect involved, I think, is fantastic, that the city, that we can offer it for advice for $350. So I'm all for this program and for moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
I agree with Councilmember Ansted. I think anything we can do to help our residents is for the best, and especially if we can keep the costs down for them, because that is one of the things that prevents people from making changes. So thank you very much, and I thoroughly support this.
Councilmember Wolf?
Okay, time to grandstand. I commend you guys so much. It's such a wonderful program. I wish I had the service when I redid my law, my front yard recently. Our water travels 440 miles. We have no local water source, and then to just be used on our very inappropriate, most of the time, landscaping. Seventy percent of all of our water is used on our outdoor landscaping, and so the vast majority of our water goes towards that. And so what this is doing is it's helping to incentivize people to take the first step, because it's also, it's very daunting. There's so many different types of plants. People don't know what the difference between drought tolerant, climate appropriate, so this is kind of a one-stop shop. And not only are we helping to save water, but we're also creating ecosystems. You know, we're in this biodiversity hotspot, we're creating places for our pollinators, for bird species, so I just think this is wonderful. I know that folks at the water district reviewed this and are very happy with this and thinks it's a wonderful service. Someone even mentioned that they wish that their city had this, and so I think that you guys took such a great proactive step. I really appreciate it. I just, I want to make sure the residents know about this. The other thing is the timing. It's a bummer that we're voting on this now, because like the fall is the best time, so I think that the big effort should be late summer to really push this forward so people can start planting in the fall months. And I look forward to seeing how this works, and I really appreciate your work on this. Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you. I also want to thank staff. I just want you to know that I am the absolutely typical resident who would use this. I like to joke that I shut off my sprinklers and everything died in my front yard years ago, so I was ahead of the trend before the 2022 drought, so still, nothing. And my house looks very much like landscape A, landscape plan A, so it's hitting home, and I have no talent for this, so I think that people like me who live in the, in the city who get very overwhelmed by the cost and the decisions that have to be made to make your, to make your property drought tolerant, you know, I've been basically paralyzed for years because I don't know what to do. So for people like me, thank you. I will say that when Councilmember Wolf and I were, you know, knocking on doors in 2022, the drought and water was one of the top three issues. You know, we heard it all the time, so the fact that our city is responding to that, I think, is very, very useful. It is clearly a top issue for our residents, and from the requirements that I see, I think, you know, good majority of our residents, probably, you know, good, you know, significant amount of our residents would qualify for this. I love that it addresses our climate action and adaptation plan. My one concern is the defensible space issue. I know that we haven't given you direction. I know that we, and I'm not, I don't mean that in terms of ordinances and compliance, but since this is a service where we are advising people, I think having that zero to five incorporated in that advice is super important to Mayor Protem Sylvester's point that if later on down the road, when the fire department says, "You need to remove all this," I don't want people to come back and say, "Well, the city of Agora sanctioned this and said it was okay." And, and so, you know, I know all of this is voluntary, but I think we really have to do our due diligence in making sure specifically that that zero to five, that people are aware of it. And to our mayor's point, the handout in the packet that talks about defensible space that has the dotted lines around each zone, I would love to see at least zone zero in that dotted line when we do those landscape plans, because right now, when I look at it, it looks like a lot of the plants are just right up against the structures, but if we, and probably not, I mean, it's just a general drawing, so it could be interpreted a bunch of ways, but if we could just maybe put those hatched lines in there, then I think that visually shows people that, you know, remind them that it gives them a, they need to think about a five-foot buffer, or they should be thinking about it. So those are my thoughts. I'm really, really happy, like I said, I think it's going to really speak to people like me who have no artistic talent, who have no vision for their front yards. who have no vision for their front yards. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. I'm sorry to be going out of order, but I just was looking through my notes on my laptop. In the document right there, the defensible space, it says a five-foot walking path around the entire structure. There must be a five-foot walking path around the entire structure. Is that true?
Well, this is typically, when we look at new development, it's always a requirement. That's the first thing we would ask when we look at new development. When it's new, when it's existing, there's still that caveat that you have to, a fire department has to be able to walk around the structure. So when we look at condensers, fencing, screening, anything that goes into the side yards, specifically these side yards which are narrower than, you know, front and rear yard, but there should be an access all around the property for the fire department.
Okay. And when, the price for our landscape architect's job on this is capped at $350, right? Unless the homeowner.
It is a deposit. So we're considering this deposit at this point.
Okay. So, but the homeowner wouldn't all of a sudden get a bill from the city of Agora Hills for $1,800?
Oh, no. No, 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 no.
Okay.
If I could add to it, so essentially what we did is we estimated about how long, how much of our landscape architect's time would be used to be reasonable with this material to give them guidance and an inspection. So the $350 is so that we could recover the costs that the city is already paying him. So that's the deposit. We recognize that some lots are larger, and it may take, it may take longer, and you can exceed that $350. Our goal is to try and encourage as many people as possible to use the project, to use the program, because we believe that it's a beneficial program to everyone. So if you have a very large lot and it's going to take more than $350, we wouldn't let you rack up an $1,800 bill before we tell you, hey, you've exceeded the deposit. Do you want to continue?
Okay, great. That sounds like a good plan. Okay, so then my comments about it are, you know, and this kind of echoes what Councilmember Wolf is saying, you know, we'd want to do a hard push on it right now, because otherwise it's going to get too hot to plant. And then they can plant in the fall if they, you know, start doing it, because we don't, we don't want to encourage people, then all of a sudden they're planting in the heat of the summer. And I saw literature in here that says that's not a good time to plant, but just in terms of our timing of rolling out the program. Number two was, you've given out such great information, and I'm wondering if we can come up with, and we can probably even talk to Poison Free Agora or something, about a one-page, you know, reminder for people not to use herbicides, you know, or to some, trying to use some natural, organic herbicides, you know, rather, again, it's not mandatory, but just, we're giving out such good information, it'd be nice to give out a one-pager on something like that. The one thing that disappointed me a little bit was that I would have liked to have seen more natives. And I don't need, I don't mean more like you go out and get more natives to put on the list, but maybe take out or reduce some of the non-natives. There's a lot of great choices on here, but there's not, you know, and considering our own streetscape plan is, you know, something like 85% native, you know, I think we should be trying to encourage our homeowners to do natives. I'm not saying 100%, but I, if you could take a look, I don't know how my fellow council members feel, but again, I'm not saying add more natives if you don't, if the landscape architect doesn't think that they would do well in Agora, fair enough, but maybe take out some of the non-natives. You know, people can put in whatever they want, but I'm just saying, you know, let's try and guide them down the path of native plants. Let's see. And then I'd like to see Growing Works added to the list. And, you know, somewhere in the literature, just, you know, when you're talking about the zero, Zone Zero, to, you know, to actually make a statement that if they choose to plant within zero to five feet, that we can't promise them that that won't, that, you know, in the future, that won't be forced to be removed.
All right. I'm sorry, just to be clear, are you asking for some sort of hold harmless or disclaimer to be included?
Yes.
We can work with the city attorney.
Yeah, something that just, you know, like we're putting them on notice. If they want to put, you know, plants right next to the walls and the structure, you know, they can do whatever they want, but that, you know, giving them a heads up that, you know, hey, the day may come when the city of Agora has our ordinance, or the state takes further action. And so we can't really, you know, guarantee that that won't happen. And I think those were my only comments. Other than that, I think that there's a lot of homeowners that will like this plant, you know, to, you know, it's kind of like what we did for our residents with the ADUs. We're now giving them plans for landscaping, and so hopefully they'll take advantage of the program. So, thank you.
Sorry, could I add one more thing? We were talking about how to get the information out. We could also, can we also send it to all our HOA so that they can, I know like Morrison I sent them something, and they put it out to all the Morrison Ranch residents.
I think that's a great idea.
The HOAs are a great, great way to get this out. And I like the idea that we have some sort of disclaimer about the zero to five, because I know it's coming, and it's not coming from the fire department, it's coming from the insurance companies.
Well, they don't make laws, but you're right.
No, but they don't.
We can't guarantee.
Well, they won't give you insurance, and if you can't get insurance, you're sunk.
Yeah, exactly. And so, yeah, I do, I do think it would be worthwhile to have that in there, just to protect ourselves, because I could see that happening. Well, I was looking at the picture, and I like the way this one looked, and that's what I planted, and now you're telling me I have to pull it out. So, and that'd be also good, you know, that we can't guarantee that they won't have a problem with their insurance company, you know. Okay, so that's it. Does anyone else have any other comments?
I have one comment. I don't, so when you get the rebate, I mentioned it's $2 right now, but next week it might be $3. A lot of, and this isn't the city's responsibility, but they get taxed, people don't realize that they get taxed on.
Yeah, you get a 1099?
Yeah, on that rebate. So I don't know, I don't, I'm just kind of thinking out loud. They're looking at federal legislation now to overturn that, but maybe the architect or the landscape architect can mention that to people, or that could be something that's discussed, just so they understand that it's not.
Yeah. I think that's a good.
So what you're saying is my, my trend of not doing my front yard, I should wait just a little longer?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a good point. Anything else? Okay, then let's see. If we have no further deliberations, I'd like to get a staff, the staff recommendation is to adopt Resolution Number 24-2058 and direct staff to implement the landscape guidance program for residential properties. I'll call for a motion in a second to approve the staff recommendation.
So moved. Deborah Klein-Lopez?
Councilmember Chris Anstead, seconds.
Thank you. And I'll defer to the clerk for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Anstead?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Buckley-Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Buckley-Weber, you have approval, five to zero.
Thank you. Our next item is a discussion to consider the adoption of Resolution Number 24-2056A, authorizing Agora Hills Improvement Authority lease revenue bonds, Series 2024A, and Agora Hills Improvement Authority lease revenue refunding bonds, Series 2024B, and authorizing and ratifying the sale of said 2024 bonds and execution of the bond purchase agreement in connection therewith, and authorizing certain other matters relating thereto. I'll now defer to our Director of Finance, Diego Ibanez.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Buckley-Weber and City Council. This evening's finance staff is asking the City Council to approve a resolution that ratifies the bond purchase agreement to an additional $25,000 in issuance. During the bond pricing on February 22nd, it became necessary to increase the agreement by an additional $25,000 to obtain a better interest rate, a three-year call on the bonds, and the ability to release the community center front end debt obligation. The initial resolution was for $12,300,000. Ratifying the bond purchase agreement would increase the amount to $12,325,000. That concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? It seems pretty clear, well, it seems pretty clear cut. You did a good job on the staff report for people like me.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Anstead, you have a question?
Just one quick question. I think, I just want to make sure I clarify, one of the things in there that I thought was fantastic, and I want to make sure I'm reading it right, is that basically with the lower interest, if the grant request comes on time, we actually are going to pay back the bond two years earlier than what we expected. We're going to pay it back in 2027 instead of 2029.
Yes, that is the plan.
Yep. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing no questions, let's move on to deliberations. Let's start with you, Councilmember Wolf.
Yeah, I want to thank the finance director for kind of making an extremely complex, for me, relatively simple to understand. I appreciate the city's work negotiating this and looking.
Hang on a second, I'm sorry, but did I call for comments? I did not. Okay. Hang on to your thoughts for a second.
I take it all back.
Okay, he didn't say anything. Nobody heard it, okay. Before we move, okay, we've done our questions of staff. Now I'll defer to the city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Buckley-Weber.
I can feel your breathing over here.
No written public comments have been received. No speaker cards have been submitted.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now we have no further questions. Now we'll move on to deliberations. Councilmember Wolf, will you start us off again?
Oh, why, thank you. So the city did its due diligence, and we, I think negotiated favorable conditions or found favorable conditions, so I appreciate that, and I look forward to supporting this and moving forward on this.
Councilmember Lopez?
Couldn't have said it better myself. I agree, and I'm ready to move forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Anstead?
Agree and ready to move forward, and great. Very happy that we're doing it, paying back earlier.
Mayor Protem Sylvester?
Agree and ready to move forward.
And I agree and ready to move forward. So I'll now call for a motion in a second to approve the staff recommendation. Do I need to re-read this, to adopt Resolution Number 24-2056A?
Mayor Protem Sylvester, so moves.
Councilmember Wolf, seconds.
Thank you very much. We'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Anstead?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Buckley-Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Buckley-Weber, you have approval, five to zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to convene the Agora Hills Improvement Authority meeting. I'm going to call it to order. Defer to the authority secretary for roll call.
Commissioner Anstead?
Present.
Commissioner Lopez?
Here.
Commissioner Wolf?
Present.
Vice President Sylvester?
Here.
President Buckley-Weber?
Here.
President Buckley-Weber, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Now we're going to the approval of the agenda. Will the maker of the motion and second to approve tonight's agenda state your names?
I will move to approve the agenda. This is Deborah Klein-Lopez.
Councilmember Chris Anstead, seconds.
Thank you, and I'll defer to the secretary for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Anstead?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf?
Aye.
Vice President Sylvester?
Aye.
President Buckley-Weber?
Aye.
President Buckley-Weber, you have approval, five to zero.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the Improvement Authority public comments. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items not listed on the agenda that are under the subject matter jurisdiction of the Improvement Authority. I will now defer to the secretary.
Thank you. No written public comments have been received, and no speaker cards have been submitted.
Thank you. So now we'll move on to the Improvement Authority consent calendar. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items on the consent calendar. I will now defer to the secretary.
Thank you. No written public comments have been received, and no speaker cards have been submitted.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the authority on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I will now call for a motion in a second to adopt the consent calendar.
Councilmember Wolf, I'll make a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
And Vice President Sylvester, seconds.
Thank you. I'll defer to the secretary for a roll call.
Thank you. And will that also be with the amendment to the minutes as there were for the prior meeting?
Oh, yes, because the minutes are here again. Same amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Anstead?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf?
Aye.
Vice President Sylvester?
Aye.
President Buckley-Weber?
Aye.
President Buckley-Weber, you have approval, five to zero.
Thank you. Our next item is a discussion to consider the adoption of Resolution Number IA24-06A, authorizing Agora Hills Improvement Authority lease revenue bonds, Series 2024A, and Agora Hills Improvement Authority lease revenue refunding bonds, Series 2024B, and authorizing and ratifying the sale of said 2024 bonds and execution of the bond purchase agreement in connection therewith, and authorizing certain other matters relating thereto. I will now defer again to Director of Finance, Diego Ibanez.
Good evening, President Buckley-Weber and members of the Improvement Authority, excuse me. This evening, finance staff is asking the Improvement Authority to approve a resolution that ratifies the bond purchase agreement to an additional $25,000 in issuance. During the bond pricing on February 22nd, it became necessary to increase the agreement by an additional $25,000 to obtain a better interest rate, a three-year call on the bonds, and the ability, the ability to release the community center from any debt obligation. The initial resolution was for $12,000, $12,300,000. Ratifying the bond purchase agreement would increase the amount to $12,325,000. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you. Since this is the same matter, does anybody have any new questions? Okay, thank you. Now we'll move, this section is reserved for public comment. I will now defer to the secretary.
Thank you. No written public comments have been received, and no speaker cards have been submitted.
Thank you. So we'll now move on to deliberations. Why don't we start with you, Mayor Protem Sylvester?
As I stated before, I agree with everything, and I'm ready to move forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Anstead?
Ditto.
Commissioner Wolf?
I'm ready to move forward.
Commissioner Lopez?
Ready to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm ready to move forward. The staff recommendation is to adopt Resolution Number IA24-06A. I'll now call for a motion in a second to approve the staff recommendation.
This is Commissioner Chris Anstead, move to approve the staff recommendation.
I'll second. Deborah Klein-Lopez?
And I'll defer to the clerk for a roll call, it says. But aren't you the, okay.
Commissioner Anstead?
See, I'm awake over here.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf?
Aye.
Vice President Sylvester?
Aye.
President Buckley-Weber?
Aye.
President Buckley-Weber, you have approval, five to zero.
Thank you. There being no further business, I will now adjourn the Improvement Authority meeting and reconvene the City Council meeting. So are there any comments from staff? Okay, are there any comments from the City Council? We will be adjourning tonight in memory of John Ascension, so you can make your comments now, or if you want to, whatever, if you have other comments to make, you can make both at the same time. So why don't we start with you, Commissioner Wolf?
Councilmember, but.
Councilmember. I just demoted you.
That would have been Commissioner. I want to start off with commending the Mayor Protam on doing a fantastic job stepping in for the mayor at the International Women's Day event. You did a fantastic job, and your words were very well received by everyone, so congratulations on that. And I also want to congratulate the mayor for starring in a film from the Water District put out-
The President.
The President, yes. And you did a fantastic job, and I recommend everyone check it out. It's called Flames to the Ocean, a Woolsey Fire retrospective, and the Water District put it together, and it's really, it was well done. With that, I would like to, it would now be the appropriate time to-
Yes, go ahead.
So, I know that we've all heard a lot about John, but I spent some time last few days writing something that I wanted to read tonight, that, about how losing John still feels unjust and is something I'm really struggling with. John was one of the kindest, most genuine people I've ever met, and John was such an important member of this community, and I feel lucky to have been his friend. When I was appointed to the Planning Commission six years ago, John reached out to me, and I remember our first lunch, where we got together at Sharky's, and we talked about all the people we knew in common, because he was so intertwined in the community in umpiring. And I had friends that he had umpired for years and years, and everyone knew and loved him from that. I also feel really lucky that I got to properly say goodbye to John. I heard he was in the hospital, and this was the Saturday before he passed, and I texted him saying, hey, John, I heard you weren't feeling too well, sending you my best. And about three minutes later, he called me, and we talked for about eight minutes, and from the way he sounded, he was upbeat and positive, and I asked him, I said, John, is there anything I could do for you? And he said, just moral support is all I need in you to continue to be my friend. And to me, I thought that it was just, I would be talking to him in a few days. I didn't think that would be the end, but 72 hours later, we lost him. And I'm still grappling with that. And during my time on the Planning Commission, John was always a stable and calming force, as the mayor mentioned earlier. He ran meetings with such professionalism and made everyone felt heard. He did this all the while maintaining order and keeping the meeting moving forward. I do remember a thing that he would say constantly when meetings would get out of hand, or people would yell, he would say, this is not how we do things in Agoura Hills. And that was his line, and immediately demanded the respect from the audience when he would say that, because he was right. John was such a wonderful, amazing man, and I'm going to miss him dearly. I want to send my boundless love to his family, and I want to thank John for all he has done for the city, and that he loved, and the city loved him so much. I will miss him dearly, and thank you for the opportunity to say those words.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you. I feel like it's very hard to come up with new words to express this loss when, you know, his family and those of you who have spoken already have so eloquently described the loss that we're all feeling. The sentiment and the stories that John's family have shared over the past few days, along with your comments, Mayor and Councilmember, they're so poignant and so eloquent, and definitely described his life and his contributions that he's made to this community, and it makes saying goodbye that much harder. One of the things I did in preparing for these comments is I pulled up his, John's obituary, and I did a search on the webpage for the word "Agoura." And the word "Agoura" was mentioned 15 times in his obituary. I mean, to say that he was, loved Agoura and served Agoura, I just thought that was just so telling, that it was, it was practically in every line of his, of his final, you know, I don't even know, these final words that we got from his family. So 15 times in his obituary, he was raised in Agoura, I think he moved here before it was even Hills. He went to Agoura schools, he was an umpire and active parent in Agoura Pony Baseball. He, of course, was an Agoura Hills Planning Commissioner, and one of the lines in the obituary which really hit home is that, it said, John was a true product of Agoura and its surroundings. And it's just so funny, just to, you know, one little, one little note is that, again, when Councilmember Wolf and I were knocking on doors in 2022, do you remember how many times we ran into him? Like, every neighborhood that we, everywhere we went, he would like come around the corner in his van, and we should be like, John, you're everywhere. He really was everywhere. So, so well-loved, and that was obvious when we went to the, to the service yesterday, and the church was just packed. The one thing I will say is that I feel like I never saw a more optimistic man. I didn't live with him, so I'm sure he had his moments, but I never saw him mad, I never saw him upset, I never saw him lose his temper. To your point, Councilmember, he remained even-keeled and thoughtful, even as he pondered the most complex projects that came before him on the Planning Commission. But most importantly, he was just so optimistic. I never saw him down, and he, I really believed that he was going to beat this once again, even when I also spoke with him in his final days, it was the same thing. I sent him a text, I got a text back from his brother, and I was so thrilled, but then the phone rang, and it was him. And I'm just so, so moved that he took the time to call when I know he was so ill. So, John, I will miss you. I have utmost respect for those who choose to live a life of service, and our community is better off because of you. May your memory be a blessing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Sylvester?
Thank you. I first met John when I joined the Planning Commission in 2021. At that time, we were meeting virtually because of the pandemic. It wasn't until several of us traveled to a Planning Commissioners Academy in Northern California that I really got to know him as a friend. We talked about our families and the other ways we were involved in the community. What was obvious to me was how proud John was of his family, his lovely wife, Fulgene, and his sons, James and David. Agoura Hills was his home, and John and Fulgene were raising their family in the same house he had grown up in. How many of us can claim that? John gave back so much to the community he was a part of. For me, he embodied the definition of a true gentleman. He was always considerate, polite, and gracious. Even when he was faced with some difficult decisions on the Planning Commission, he always took the time to explain his position and give positive comments to show that he had taken all the facts under consideration. His passing is a tragic loss for his family and for our community. And then I would just like to add one other thing. Two years ago, I was on the Walk to School Day at Yerba Buena, and as we came towards the school, the school mascot rushed me and gave me a big hug, and I was thinking, who is this attacking me? And of course, it was John.
That's great.
I will miss you.
Councilmember Anstead?
Yeah. So I knew John the most, actually, from a lot of the events here in the city, especially the concert events, and I would see him there, and he would always come up to me and start talking to me, and he would always bring up issues in the city, and he would want to tell me about like thoughts that he had, about how we could try to solve things and different issues that he would bring up. But he was always a very positive, like Mayor mentioned earlier, always with a smile on his face, always happy person every time I interacted with him. And so I did also write down some comments that I wanted to share. John was someone who liked to live life to the fullest. He was someone who loved his family and cared about his community. Every time I saw John, he was in a good mood and treated everyone with dignity, even when he was going through tough times with his health. John loved Agoura Hills, and he helped improve our city by being the Chair of the Planning Commission. He always shared ideas he had for how to make our city a better one. Thank you, John, for setting an example for others and always being there for your family and the City of Agoura Hills. You will truly be missed. Thank you.
Thank you. That's lovely, everybody. Does anybody from staff want to join in and say any comments? Well, thank you. So, thank you for joining us this evening. The next regular City Council meeting is scheduled for 6:00 PM on Wednesday, March 27, 2024, in the Council Chambers of the Civic Center located at 30001 Ladyface Court, Agoura Hills, California. This meeting is now adjourned in memory of John Ascension.